Welcome to a regular Bellevue City Council meeting for May 23, 2022. Before we begin, I just wanted to recount that I was able to participate in an international peace run last week. There were a group of individuals from representing eight different countries that ran together, speaking 10 different languages, and I was very honored to get to carry the peace torch. I think we may have somebody speaking more detail at public comment, but it was a real honor to be involved in that. And I believe this is a run that has been going on annually since 1987 or something. It was the first time it's had a segment in Bellevue, so I hope that they'll be back next year. So, Clerk, could we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
So, we have two proclamations tonight, and the first one is National Safe Boating and Paddling Week. And I'm going to have Councilmember Robertson read that, except when I had to read that or when I got to read it, I had to wear a life vest. I'm not seeing her in a life vest. You get a pass on that. It's okay. I think I'm okay. They look better on them, so I'm happy to read the proclamation, Mayor. Whereas recreational boating is a popular activity in the many lakes and waters around Bellevue, and whereas knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment, allowing boaters to take precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family, and whereas failing to follow nautical rules, using drugs or alcohol while controlling a boat, or choosing not to wear a life vest adds significant risks, and whereas the proper equipment such as life jackets and preparedness activities such as checking the weather ahead of time saves lives, and whereas the U.S. Coast Guard and the U.S. Power Squadron are invested in the well-being of the community and are committed to providing free vessel safety checks for the community. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through the 27, 2022, as National Safe Boating and Paddling Week, and urge all citizens to practice year-round safe boating practices and be boat smart, boat safe, and wear it while on the water. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue. Thank you. So Dale Bodicka is here to receive the proclamation, and we can... Do you have something you'd like to say? Okay, come on up, and then we'll take a picture with all of you.
Right there. Maybe here.
You can sit down in the chair and talk. There you go.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much for your support of National Safe Boating Week and Paddling Week. My name is Dale Bodicka, and as the Vice Division Commander for Division II, the Greater Seattle Area, I am here tonight with members of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary and members of the United States Patrol Squadron doing business as America's Boating Club of Bellevue is their new name, to promote recreational boating safety. Both organizations are volunteer organizations working to improve safety on the water. To do that, we provide boater education classes where the ones to get your boater education card from, and offer vessel safety checks of all types, including paddlecraft. We're trying to reduce the... A lot of our residents recently have discovered boating, and unfortunately, we had some increases during the pandemic because of accidents and deaths because of that. We are looking to work... We are looking forward to working with the citizens of Bellevue to reduce accidents and to help them enjoy our local water safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we all go down? We'll take a picture. All right, we have another proclamation on national gun violence awareness, and Councilmember On is going to read that one, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who were shot and wounded, and on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides in the United States every year, and whereas Washington State has 810 gun deaths every year with a rate of 12.2 deaths per 100,000 people, and whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. To commemorate her 25th birthday on June 3, 2022, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea to wear orange was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3, 2022 to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of victims and survivors, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated gun violence with increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence over the past two years. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas in recognition of public safety as a top priority in our communities, we renew our commitment to reduce and prevent gun violence and pledge to all to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands while encouraging responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim June 3, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Bellevue to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and encourage all residents to support community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence as we honor and value human lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are 14 registered speakers for oral communications. And a couple of things for the public's information before we get started. Pursuant to the council rules, oral communications is allowed for a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers are given up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Tonight, it does appear that we're going to have more than three speakers signed up in support of the Supportive Housing Luca. I'll let you know when we get to that point. In addition, I need to point out that on tonight's agenda is a unique element that where the council is holding its initial public hearing on the 2023-24 budget and 2023-29 capital investment program plan. Therefore, all comments to the council related to the budget or CIP plan should come under the public hearing and not oral communications. If you have signed up for oral communications incorrectly, not to worry. When I call your name, please just indicate that your comments are going to be related to the budget. I'll remove your name from oral comms and then add you to the public hearing list, which will be handled under item nine of our agenda this evening. So with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Hannah Floss, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Floss, I don't see you identified by name virtually. Can you use star nine or raise hand function if you're connected with a phone? Thank you. Ms. Floss, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and council members for letting me speak today. My name is Hannah Floss. I am a steering committee member of Indivisible Eastside. As Eastside community members in Bellevue, we believe in the vision of public safety in our communities that goes beyond reliance on armed police officers. We have learned through intensive study about community responder programs and urge Bellevue to establish such a program. The overwhelming majority of 911 calls involve mental health, substance use, neighbor disputes, nuisance complaints, and requests for wellness checks that require appropriately trained unarmed behavioral health professionals. Both the police and policing reform advocates often assert that specialized service providers such as social workers, medical professionals, and peer support counselors are better equipped to handle such situations than armed officers. Community responder programs keep people out of jails and emergency rooms. They save both lives and money, and they free up police to handle criminal activity. To create the core benefits of responder programs, our research shows that the three following elements are essential. One, the program must be staffed by people dedicated first and foremost to nonviolence. Community responders may come from a variety of health and social service professions. Two, the responders must not wear police uniforms, come in police cars, or carry weapons. Operating as civilians, responders do not trigger negative responses in the way that police often do. They are welcomed in more homes and neighborhoods. Three, there should be no wrong door for behavioral health crisis care. These response teams are an important component in building up a comprehensive care infrastructure that directs people to care wherever they are introduced to the system. We often hear concern from our Eastside colleagues about the personal safety of the responders. This is puzzling since the experience across the country is that while the responders always have the option of asking for police backup, they very seldom use it, less than 1% of the time, as reported in one study that used data from seven programs. A recent SPD report found that 80% of 911 calls were noncriminal events. Bellevue City Council can help to dispel this, the myth that people in mental health crises become violent when confronted. In fact, they are more often the victims of violence than the source. For some local governments, establishing a crisis response team is cost prohibitive given the resources it takes to cover personal, cover training, personnel, and equipment, but in the long run, these programs save money. That is why I wanted to make sure the council is aware that we have a champion for this type of funding in Congressman Adam Smith. In 2022, $10 million was appropriated for behavioral health crisis response, a portion of which Health One in Seattle received. In the fiscal year 2023, Representative Smith and Cory Bush will be requesting $100 million in funding for programs that provide alternative crisis responses to 911 calls. If Bellevue creates a community responder program that does not include armed officers, this type of funding would be available to support it. If the council would like to connect with Representative Smith's office regarding this funding, I'd be happy to help make that introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Floss. The next speaker on the list is Fernando Perez. Mr. Perez is also joining us virtually. Can you hear me, Mr. Perez?
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
I would like to open with a quote by Franz Dulp. "To love a place is not enough; we must find ways to heal it. In restoring the land, I restore myself." Good evening. My name is Fernando Perez, and I have worked as an English professor at Bellevue College for eight years now. I have enjoyed the proximity to nature on many of the trails that the city has to offer. I'm often struck with the memory of the many camping trips as a child where my father taught me to leave the forest better than I found it. This meant being the steward of the land, picking up after myself and others because we were guests, nourished by the smell of pine sap, the soft ground we slept on, and the soothing swish of wind through the shade of the canopy overhead, and acknowledging our gratitude for the subtle gifts we were given by the natural world. We needn't be in designated forest lands or on camping trips to know the benefits of trees, but our ears are incapable of hearing what they have to say to us. I have come today to speak on their behalf. Currently, the City of Bellevue has no special protections for landmark trees. These 100 to 150-year-old trees are irreplaceable in our lifetimes. Landmarked trees 30 inches in diameter or greater are what give Bellevue its character, and it would be a detrimental loss if we did not work to preserve them. Author and professor Robin Wall Kimmer writes, "It's amazing to think that within the lifetime of those old trees on the ground, they have gone from being revered to being rejected to being nearly eliminated, and then somebody looked up and noticed they were gone." I invite you all to remember your own gratitude for the gifts that trees continue to provide us. I encourage you to consider the findings and recommendations Trees for Livability has conducted through their research on this topic. I ask that Bellevue update its tree code to carry forward tree removal history and tree protection decisions with every property and make this information clear to all stakeholders and community members. Thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. The next speaker on the list is Hal Ferris. Mr. Ferris is also joining us virtually. Mr. Ferris, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, my name is Hal Ferris, and I represent Imagine Housing and the Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition. This is a tough act to follow, Mr. Perez, and his eloquence in his testimony. But thank you, Mayor Robinson, the members of the council, the city staff, and Planning Commission for the hard work and efforts that they put in on the transitional and permanent supportive housing, a critical need in our community. The Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition supports the staff and planning commission recommendations except for one primary recommendation, and that is the requirement for a conditional use permit for short-term and transitional emergency housing. No other city on the east side has a conditional use permit requirement for this use. A conditional use permit is a time-consuming, expensive, and results in a barrier to provide transitional and short-term housing. A conditional use permit requirement is inconsistent with state law in House Bill 1220, which states cities shall not prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones in which residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Bellevue needs to be proactive to provide quality short-term transitional housing. Without meaningful solutions that respond to the need in our community, our parks, open space, parking lots, streets, and other public spaces will continue to be used to fulfill this unmet need. We hope that you can look at this closely and eliminate this requirement for a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The next speaker is Mallory Gustav Trask, who is again joining us virtually. Ms. Gustav Trask, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
I want to thank the City of Bellevue, the staff, and the mayor for very much what Hal said, their continued efforts to bring supportive and transitional housing to our most vulnerable residents in Bellevue. It's important for the commission to continue to do some more of a deep dive into the conditional use permits. Like Hal said, it creates delays and extra costs for creating transitional and supportive housing, and for our neighbors and our residents who are struggling to find a stable place to live, it's more time that they're going to be out searching for that. So eliminating the barriers that we can to that conditional use permit really helps support folks get into housing as quickly as needed. The other piece that I would like to ask folks to take another look at is the requirement for residents to have a code of conduct. As an affordable housing provider on the east side, we have our tenants sign leases, and the lease really outlines all of the conditions of their tenancy, and adding an additional piece to a code of conduct just further stigmatizes communities that are disenfranchised and who are vulnerable. And really looking at this piece around resident code of conduct is important for this process. So please, take that into account and look at that conditional use permit and also the code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is here in person, and that's Marguerite Richard.
I'm all the way from Seattle, Washington. My name is Marguerite Richard. I come to you again today in a form of grievance because what has happened has transitioned a lot of people known as indigenous black people in the city of Buffalo. I had no clue as to how they lived before I lived. That means that this is a continuum of what people would consider blatant racism and attack on us as a culture. And this is Mental Health Month, and people want to just go laissez-faire over people. It only takes one tragic situation, and their mind is shifted forever. I don't understand. I really don't, and I'm trying to have somebody that echoes fascism into my brain that that's what it is, and that's the way I should speak. This week, we celebrated Malcolm X's birthday, and I remember what Malcolm X said because I came up at that particular time when things were really hardcore for us. And I was like, how do you get out of this when every time you look up, something is going on? Blue? And he's Japanese and indigenous. Yeah, he's indigenous, black. And I said what he was because it is important that we contribute to this society, too. Why was at the doctor for something like heart attacks, stroke, diabetes, cancer? I mean, every little disease you could think of, and society put it there. Then they want to know why them children out there going willy-nilly? You don't do nothing for them. They got scrap houses left for them, huh? And I'm talking about people for... I saw this man some other county using free speech. He talked for almost 10 minutes, and the council people interacted with him. I was like, what? All they do in Seattle is trespass you for using your sense with God-given right to speak, not something that mankind gave you. You know, when they used to spank you on the behind and you come out with a yell? That's your God-given yell when you come out that long. And I don't understand what we're being given in these chambers and the like that could, you know, try to intimidate us, make us look like we're screwballs just for being able to speak to people that are supposed to be at a norm. Okay, so that mental health thing, it goes straight across the board. Don't be putting it all in our households and in our neighborhoods, knowing that those people, one gunshot, and they were gone, and their family is left to bury them.
The next speaker on our list is Ann Coughlin, and Ms. Coughlin is joining us virtually. Can you hear me, Ms. Coughlin?
Yes, I am unmuted. Thank you, Charmin. I have to say, you are primetime material. Okay. My name is Dr. Ann Coughlin. My address is on file. Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I am speaking tonight as a clinical psychologist and guardian of a sister who suffered a TBI and lives in an assisted living facility in New York. First, I'd like to read the statement that we were given by the City of Bellevue when we began our interminable Northeast Bellevue Comp Plan, four years and counting. Our residents live in a safe, clean city that promotes healthy living. The perception of safety contributes to the success of businesses and neighborhoods. We seek input from our residents and businesses, and this input informs city decision-making. We make decisions in a transparent manner. In Bellevue, commitment to public service is paramount. Listening to Mark Donas, it seems that the main point of moving chronically homeless onto the east side is to clear downtown Seattle. I believe that moving people into permanent supportive housing without requirements for the facility or the residence will be a sweep, moving people and problems to another location without really addressing the problem. Seattle claimed that 80% of its population suffered from drug addiction and serious mental illness in its suit against the Sackler family in the opioid crisis. In 2020, Mental Health America ranked states on the prevalence of mental illness and access to mental health treatment. Washington ranked 45th, 46th. I was surprised until I saw, because they have so much money, that basically only 7% was spent on mental health services. Most was spent on housing and bureaucratic infrastructure. Now, the housing costs will increase dramatically as people are moved into some of the highest rental districts of the state and county. A wiser and more cost-effective approach would be to house those who have already accepted services and will actually use the services and move out of the PSH and to house the others in more rural areas. Unfortunately, those untreated serious mentally ill will continue to suffer themselves and cause others to suffer. Hard drug addicts will continue to use and create an economy about it. Please listen to us and require a conditional use permit, standard operating procedure plan, code of conduct, good neighbor advisory panel, and notice to those within 1,000 feet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Kristi Weir, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Weir, based on your, the topics that you've signed up for, I believe that your comments are more related to the budget. Can you confirm that for me?
Only one-third is related to budgets.
Okay, then you can proceed with your non-related budget comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I'm a Bellevue resident, and today I'm also representing the Earth and Climate Action Ministry of East Shore Unitarian Church in Bellevue. For two years, our Climate and Action Ministry has supported the Warrston Can't Wait Initiative to pass House Bill 1099, which would have required cities to use specific guidelines to incorporate environmental sustainability into their comprehensive planning process. However, due to late lack of time, the legislation did not pass. Yet recognizing the urgency of this climate action, some cities are moving toward incorporating requirements from House Bill 1099 into their budgets and comprehensive plans, and we urge Bellevue to do the same. The Earth and Climate Action Ministry is also a supporter of the Trees for Livability and Earth the Council to make the recommended needs, needed changes in the Bellevue Tree Code. We recognize and applaud the development and refinement of Bellevue's Environmental Stewardship Initiative. However, there's a critical need for increased staff and funding to nail down in detail how to actualize the plan to meet the 2030 goal of a 50% reduction in emissions. Since environmental action can come throughout all city departments, added resources are also needed to do that. We must amp up our game now, immediately. In May, I attended the K4C Town Hall Panel Discussion on how cities in King County are working together on climate issues. A takeaway for me was when Councilperson Janice Son pointed out the linkage of Vision Zero to vehicle miles traveled and emissions. I now realize Vision Zero is more than just reduced traffic deaths, but also about making people feel safer to walk and bicycle less, and hence less emissions. Just as Bellevue can be a leader in transportation policy like Vision Zero, it can and should be a leader on climate. So the Earth and Climate Action Ministry of East Shore Unitarian Church urges the city to, one, include provisions of House Bill 1099 in its next comprehensive plan, two, improve the Bellevue Tree Code for Trees for Livability, and add more staff and funding in the upcoming budget for the Environmental Stewardship Initiative to ensure we meet our 2030 goals and perhaps even do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the...
Mayor of Bellevue. I was supposed to finish after her. Now, is this a conspiracy?
And you make this trick many times.
May I ask that the clerk, may I ask that the clerk respond to you because I am not involved in the sign-up?
Yeah. Mr. Fuller?
I'm going to ask the clerk to respond to you because I'm not involved in the sign-up.
Mr. Fuller, you're next on the list.
So, we have somebody before you, and then you can go, okay? There's one more person before you.
No, no, he's next.
Oh, you are next? Sorry. Go ahead.
Be her with her first, before anybody got here.
Go ahead.
I spoke with council many times about this, with the city clerk in there, about this trick.
Oh, as I must say in prayer, because I'm looking at the conspiracy, 1962 conspiracy, violation of RCW 42.52020, activities incompatible with... Violation of RCW 42.52020, activities incompatible with public duty, and RCW 49.600, freedom from discrimination. Now, I'm looking at the extraordinary abuse of Immigration and Nationality Act at the time of September 11. Lynn Robinson, Mayor, Bruce Hall states at the time of September 11, agents need a chance. Agents are smart. They can learn. That's when Patty Mary can't do flow words, dyma-dum, and knowing they're coming, they're in the day like a witch, like Dwight Peck, had a duty to move for cease and desist. So I'm looking at the organized crime control that. Bruce Hall having enforced the American with Disability Act since he's been up there as mayor. So now, I'm gonna be on him like Brown on Rice, and that Fur Housing Act of 1968 that was amended in 1988, and that older American Act, July 14, 1965, that was signed by Lyndon Johnson. Bruce Hall is not above the law. I put it all on Facebook. Bruce Hall, you not above the law. And Bruce Hall know I'm very articulate. And more importantly, I'm telling you, full city council, I told Mary Lynn Robinson, that George Washington up there, 1889, he wasn't a mayor, he wasn't a president. John Hanson was in 1889. Now, see, I'm not new to this, I'm true to this. And more importantly, when I was going up under bridges and abandoned buildings out in the wood, talking to our homeless veterans that fought to make this country safer and secure, I ain't seen nothing look like you. I ain't seen nothing look like you either. When I was going under bridges and abandoned buildings. Organized crime control that. Now, Bruce Hall say, agents need a chance. At the time, the taxpayers are spending $338.3 billion on unauthorized undocumented aliens, more than what the war cost. Why do we go from here, Mayor Lynn Robinson? We doing all the right thing, but Black Lives Matters? This is not the change, or the dream Black Lives Matters can believe in. And my guy got your address and your phone number. All y'all, they took that over.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Rupasi Young.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor and City Council. I'm, my name's Rupasi Young. I'm a Bellevue resident here, and I am here on behalf of the Shree Chan Moi Wunisong Peace Run, which we were pleased and grateful to be able to share our Global Torch Relay Run with the city of Bellevue last week, and Mayor Robinson did run with us. We left from Ardmore Park and ran down to Ardmore Elementary School. And as she mentioned, the peace run is a global torch relay run that began in 1987 as a gesture of peace to humanity. And we carry a torch, we run, and we pass the torch from one person to the other, and to the next person and the next, in sort of a symbolic gesture that we, as one human family, are more different, or more alike than we are different, and that we can work together to create a more peaceful and inspired world for our immediate selves and for the future generations. And we visit with schools, and over the years, have visited with about 25,000 schools across the world. And every two years, we visit with about, or we run through 100 or so different countries. And since the peace run began in 1987, we've run through about 160 countries. And we're very happy to be here in Bellevue. And I was here with a global team, as she'd mentioned, and teammates from New Zealand, Scotland, Mexico, Germany, the United States, and Ukraine. And just one very sweet story of my teammate from Ukraine mentioned about the Ardmore school that we visited. It was a very heavily misty day, and the kids were outside just having the best time. Maybe they just wanted to be out of the classrooms, but they were running and trying to keep it short so that they wouldn't get wet. And the kids were running around the fields, and as they were ushering their way back into the classrooms, there was one little boy who stopped, and he went up to my teammate from Ukraine, and he just said, "I love you." And how often do you see something like that? Just a child, and that is really the quintessential essence of Bellevue, that we are really here a very diverse culture, but we are more alike than we are different. And thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty Nazi, damn Nazi fascist ma bandita. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about a situation that is very interesting, very unique. Right now, what as we have in King Country and Seattle, similar situation what is have Adolf Hitler in Tori with German Nazi. This is exactly what's happened. Before 1939, 100% of Germans support him. You understand? You can read this everywhere. It's simple. So what's happened after this? A big war, and after this war, 60 million people dead in all Europe in ruin totally. Situation what as we have right now in King Country absolutely similar, because you are bandita similar to German Nazi. You control everything. Democrat regime, this a fascist Nazi Gestapo regime what as we have here, and I speak here 3,000 times, and live for 35 years, and I have good experience with similar system. So situation very simple right now. I want to speak to everybody who listen to me. Guys, stop support this bandita, because this happened 80 years ago, will be happen now. Sorry, nothing new under sun. Life what is human half for last 3 million years is like a cycle, and cycle will be same. So will we not stop on this Democrat machine, this Democrat regime, this Democrat Nazi Gestapo fascism, and this here in Bellevue, too? In King Country Number One, in Seattle, too? Nobody speak, only Bellevue. Why? What is a point, guys? So I speak right now to everybody. It's not about Democrat, Republican, or Independent, or another BS. This is about fascism, what is can bring us to total war. And this war can be totally different than 60 million dying in 4145, 49, sorry, 45. So I speak right now to everybody. Stop support Democrat. Stop be freaking idiot. You want pay $5, $6 for gas? It's okay with me. Double for rent? It's okay with me. Three times food up? It's okay with me. Inflation more than 10%? It's okay with me. Crime more than 20% increase? It's okay with me. Stop freaking idiot support this Democrat Nazi Gestapo fascism, what is will become and kill us all of it. We don't have choice. It's America. Stand up, guys. Be smart. Stop support Democrat. It's absolutely dangerous situation right now. They won't make from America concentration camp like Hitler Nazi did with Germany. It's exactly what is will be happen. Will we not stand up? Stand up, America. We need stop on this dirty freaking fascism. We are all American citizens. We are all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Guillermo Rivera. And Mr. Rivera, I believe you're joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Guillermo Rivera with East Side For All. East Side For All is a racial equity and social justice organization based in the East King County. I'm here to speak for one of our initiatives that focuses on informing, advocating, and mobilizing Black Indigenous and people of color for housing justice. BICUP communities in the East Side have been invisible for many years in the decision-making process, even as BICUP communities have been increasing, increasingly exponentially on the East Side. It's time to hear from everyone that is part of our communities. We appreciate the city's diligence to this process. We also like to thank the city staff who remain responsive and informative through this process. We know that impacts from any land use code amendment will be higher for communities of color, people with disabilities, seniors, veterans, and members of the LGBTQ+ communities, since these communities are most impacted by homeless, housing instability, and rent increases. We'd like to ask you to keep this in mind when you are making decisions about this LUKA and make your decision from equitable lengths. East Side For All strongly support the allowance of permanent supportive and transitional housing and the allowance of emergency housing and shelters where hotels are allowed. We believe that this LUKA has the potential to improve Bellevue's response on the ongoing housing crisis while reaching compliance with the state's requirements. However, there are a few concerning elements that we believe can be improved with small modifications. First, we recommend not adding conditional use permitting requirements for emergency housing in districts that allow hotels. We know that the conditional use permitting introduce high costs and create long delays for services that our communities need. Second, we would like to remind the council that residents of supporting housing facilities are required to send leases and dictate the terms of their tenancy, just like any other rent. Adding another resident code of conduct is unnecessary. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and all your support for this LUKA with these small tweets. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. That does bring us to the 30-minute mark for oral communications. There were two additional speakers who were registered to speak. That was Dominic Vaughtier and Kun Siwan. I would encourage both of you to email your comments to council@bellevuewa.gov or sign up for oral communications at a future meeting. Mayor, with that, that closes oral communications.
Okay, thank you very much. We have in the packet a report from the Parks and Community Services Board, their first quarter report, but we are not going to have a presentation. So next up on our agenda is a report from our city manager. Excuse me? Okay, Mr. Miyake?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So thank you, Mayor and council members. I have one item under the city manager's report to report on this evening. It is a really good news story about our recent Bellevue Neighborhood Conference that occurred back on Saturday, May 14 this year. Before I hand it off to staff, I'd like to recognize the council for attending that very important event, as well as recognize the hard work of many staff members across every city department that partook in making this event a success. And so with that, joining us tonight for an informational update are two of the folks that led this effort, Mark Heilmann, Neighborhood Outreach Manager, and Julie Ellenherd, Community Relations Coordinator, both from our Community Development Department.
Thank you, Brad. Well, good evening, Mayor Robinson and City Council members. Julie and I are very glad to be able to present to you this evening, and even though you're here for much of the day, you weren't able to be at everything that we got to do and that residents and staff got to do during Experience Bellevue a couple weeks ago. So our Neighborhoods Conference is a biennial event taking place in 2016 and 2018. We took a very different approach in 2020, that as we're coming out of the pandemic, we really wanted to bring people back to our first large in-person event at City Hall, but really wanted to do it in a way that had many options for people to choose from, whether in the community, outside, or at City Hall. So we do want to begin by expressing gratitude for you being here with us today and for your, that day, and for your support, participation, to our leadership team from each of our departments at the city, who provided space and work plans for staff to be able to engage with the community, and especially to the staff who really jumped at the opportunities to present, and with profound professionalism, and with great engagement with participants. And I may need some help here on advancing. Okay. So this evening, we're coming to you for information only, and we are not asking for action or direction. So the day began with coffee and pastries, and being able to interact with one another and with other residents, and then a casual interview session with council members. And we would like you to know that during our evaluations, we received many comments from participants that enjoyed getting to know you, know city council members, on a more personal level, your passions and what you love about our city. Attendees were very impressed with how warm and approachable council members were, and also great appreciation of council members who were able to participate on tours. So thank you very much.
Want to talk a little bit about the Neighborhoods Conference as a one-city effort. We included nearly every department in the city, our community development staff, a regional coalition for housing, development services, IT, transportation, human resources, utilities, parks, police, and fire. So truly everyone in the city working together, and I think the conference really showcased in one day all the great work that the city does year-round. There were 20 workshops scheduled for the day. They were a combination of skill-building classes, bus tours, and walking tours, so getting people out into the community to really see what we do and where we do it. We also had resource tables from city departments in the concourse, as well as an HR recruitment table. The conference was marketed in a variety of ways, through digital, print, and at physical locations throughout the community. So the slide you see here is representative of a couple of our walking tours. Our downtown walking tour had a lot of comments from residents. They were just so amazed at all that is happening and really appreciated the opportunity to learn the how, the where, and what's really happening downtown. Across from that, you see a piece of our East Rail Tour in Wilberton, where we had many of the same types of comments, just a lot of awe of all that's going on in Bellevue and how we can all be a part of it. Next slide. We went out into the parks with tours of the Botanical Gardens, Lewis Creek with Ranger Curtis, and our volunteer tree ambassadors who led tree tours in those areas as well. We had skill-building workshops at City Hall, a variety, including a civic engagement workshop, artful listening with our Conflict Resolution Center staff, building bridges from our diversity team, and a reimagining retail session from economic development. So many choices, whether you wanted to be here at City Hall or out in the community. At lunchtime, on the next slide, you will see the Cultural Craft Club from Inner Lake High School, a great group of high school students ranging from freshmen to seniors. And their club commits itself to building artistic inclusion and building a strong sense of understanding across culture and arts and strengthening community bonds. This was one of their first chances to really take the work that they all created out into the community, and they really appreciated being here and all of the great conversations that they were able to have with residents. Next slide. Tell you a little bit about the demographics and the format of the day. Our attendees came from all 16 neighborhood areas of the city. They ranged in age from high school students to people in their 80s. About 70% of them were Bellevue residents, and the balance mostly worked in Bellevue and a few that were just visitors to Bellevue. Conference served about 200 attendees, staff, and volunteers, including 35 of our Bellevue Essentials graduates, who enjoy this kind of opportunity to continue and expand the learning that they may have started sometime over the last 10 years. We had very new residents. We had residents that have lived here just a few months, and those that have lived here for 30, 40 years. So a huge range of experience, and it was fun for us to watch people, especially on the walking tours, as they talked to each other, and they shared their own experiences of where they lived and what they remembered and what, where the Dairy Queen used to be, those kinds of things. Next slide. Thank you. So we want to talk a little bit about what we heard from the community. The conference brought people together to connect and engage in many new ways. Our participants spoke about connection, discovery, learning. Our participants spoke about connection, discovery, learning. Going to read you just a couple brief quotes from our evaluations. "We had the opportunity to participate in great conversations and discussions. We met the amazing city staff and connected with so many community members. Thank you for this wonderful experience. When I signed up, I was hoping to learn about opportunities to get more involved in our beautiful city, and I was not disappointed." We got lots and lots of comments, but just wanted to share a couple. Lots of conversation both with neighbors and among neighbors themselves, meeting new people, and participants who really appreciated learning from city staff. City council helped them understand how their city works and enjoying this experience together as a community. So we were very glad that we could bring together a one-city effort to do this and look forward to your questions.
We would underscore, it was a great day to kind of showcase a lot of the things that happened throughout the years and to kind of bring staff together to be able to do that. We do other engagement things through the year, but this was just a really great opportunity to be back together.
Thank you. That was a really good opportunity to participate for us as well. We don't usually do comments and questions at the manager's report, but we can certainly email you if we have any follow-up. But thank you for the presentation, and thanks again for including us. That was a great event.
Thanks, council.
Okay, Mr. Miyake, anything else?
That's it for the manager's report tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Lee making a recommendation for an appointment to the library board. Would you like to make a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Pete Beeson to be appointed to the Bellevue's Library, King County Library Advisory Board. We had an extensive interview of seven individuals, and as always, very challenging, difficult, because it's amazing how people, volunteers, want to commit their time and talent. And so we, the chair of the board and I, interviewed all of them, and we come to the decision to recommend Mr. Beeson to fill the rest of the term that's vacated by the previous member who's leaving the city of Bellevue. So it's, so if you want to, I would like to move the appointment of Mr. Beeson.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome, Mr. Beeson. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a public hearing. Mr. Miyake, I'm going to let you introduce this. I understand we have a staff presentation before we open it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, you have a budget public hearing. This is the first of three that you will have for this particular budget, the 2023 and 2024 budget, operating budget, and 23 through 29 capital investment program. And joining us tonight is Evan Phillips, our Budget Manager, to kick off a staff report before you open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newn House, council members. Before we open up the public hearing, I do want to take a moment to reorient us with the budget calendar, so let me just advance the slide.
Mr. Phillips, if you could use the click.
There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. So one thing, I do want to take a moment to reorient us, as I said, with the calendar. So going back to the budget workshop that was there from March 7th, I was there along with FAM Director Tony Call, as well as Parks and Community Services Director Michael Shiasaki, to bring a discussion of various financial topics, including inflationary pressures, long-term capital planning in the Parks Department, as well as other financial sustainability concerns that we bring forward for the general fund. This is our first of, as City Manager Miyake mentioned, this is the first of three public hearings that we're going to have on the 2324 budget, as well as the 23 through 2029 Capital Investment Program, also known as our CIP. The second public hearing that we are going to have is sometime in the next two months, between June and July. That date is still forthcoming, but it's important to recognize that these first two public hearings really do provide valuable feedback for the city manager's preliminary budget that will be transmitted to city council sometime in late September. So this really is the first of two very valuable points in part of our public hearings going into that preliminary budget. Once that preliminary budget is transmitted to council in late September, you all will have the opportunity to deliberate and have staff presentations, as you're all aware. And then during that period between September and late November, there will be our third and final public hearing where the public will have the opportunity to provide feedback before the potential adoption date of November 21st. The November 21st is the Monday before Thanksgiving. This is a truncated timetable, as opposed to previous years where we would go right before the Christmas holiday. This is to reflect a more truncated timetable to meet a King County Assessor's property tax deadline, so that it's the same components as you're familiar with in the past. It is just a truncated timetable. One thing I do also want to point out is we don't just have public hearings as the only venue for public input throughout this budget process. We also have a website that has the latest and greatest information about all things budget. You could go into the current 2122 budget, as well as the current CIP plan, and explore and see where there are opportunities in improvement. We also do have the budget performance and business surveys that provide wealth and information and allow the city to engage with a variety of stakeholders across the entire community, not just in the public hearings. Of course, there are the three public hearings. There's the one tonight, obviously, as well as the one in June and July, as well as the third and final public hearing that will be held somewhere between October and November before the November 21st adoption date. Of course, there's always the opportunity for the public to speak during public comment periods during any council meeting, or, as the clerk pointed out in the last, in the open comment period, directing those written comments to the council email, or in this case, FAM's email that is listed on the screen. There's also the opportunity, as the boards and commissions will be addressing budget issues throughout the summer and early fall, to engage with those boards and commissions throughout the budget process. So with that being said, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, and I pass this back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is a public hearing. It's not for council discussions. So with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are six speakers signed up for the public hearing. And before I call names, I'll say that the notice of the budget public hearing was published on both May 9th and May 16th, and the notice directed any written comments to be submitted to the city clerk or the city's budget manager by 3:00 PM this afternoon. In response to that notice, the council did receive four written comments, which were included as part of your desk packet this evening. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Debbie Lacy. She is joining us virtually. Ms. Lacy, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie Lacy, founder and executive director of Beside For All. You heard my colleague earlier, but I have a couple of requests as you determine Bellevue's budget priorities for the next biennium. First, thank you again to Mayor Robinson and members of council for the work you've been supporting related to the feasibility study for the Cross-Cultural Center. I want to encourage the council to support next steps as recommended in the Phase 3 Report of the Cross-Cultural Feasibility Study that was shared last week with an investment via your 2023 to 2024 budget. The recommendations presented by the consultant and Bellevue's Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, Dr. Whitehead, included identifying and supporting a nonprofit partner and determining priorities and available funding to support center development and operations. As an advocacy organization that's addressing inequities in our community through policies and funding, supporting people experiencing racist incidents, and advocating for housing justice, a cross-cultural center may seem low on the list of priorities. But as much as we work to oppose inequities, discrimination, hate, and systemic racism, it is imperative that we focus on what we want, what we're building and creating together for ourselves and future generations. Our built environment and community spaces should reflect all the people who contribute here. Where are the places where community members can gather to explore mutual goals, to exchange knowledge, history, resources, and to welcome newcomers? Such a place must be built with intentionality, skill, and the resources to make things happen across sectors. Bellevue has the opportunity to build something that honors community input and advances its commitments to equity and inclusion. I hope that you will commit the funds required to bring this vision into reality. Related to this is my second request, very quickly, an investment in capacity-building support for local community-based organizations. While organizations are grateful for the funding support that in large part comes from human services funds, our nonprofits, especially those rooted in Black, Brown, and immigrant communities, have been stretched to expand quickly to respond to the pandemic. They are in need of capacity-building support to continue to be strong for Bellevue and its residents. Please consider including them in your budget for capacity building and that, make sure that you, I, work with them to identify their own priorities for where that funding should go to best support them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Chris Marks. And Ms. Marks, I see that you're participating virtually, but I cannot identify you by name. Can you use star nine if you're connected with a phone to raise your hand? Okay, I do not see a hand. I'll circle back. Next speaker would be April Stevens. And, I'm sorry, are you Ms. Marks or Ms. Stevens? Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members, and city staff. My name is April Stevens, and I am a resident of Bellevue. I hope you hear this all the time, but I'll say it again. Thank you for all you do. As an alumni of the Bellevue Essentials class, I can truly appreciate the work you do in making Bellevue a really great place to live, so thank you. Last December, when the revised budget was voted on, a chart was shared with the council demonstrating how inadequate the staffing was for our environmental stewardship plan, especially when compared to other cities of comparable size. At that time, the council instructed the city staff to go back to their department budgets and see if more funds could be found to address this inadequacy. This gave me great optimism that the council was finally recognizing this need. Sadly, however, nothing came of this request. We are now six months down the road, and the document has been, another document, was presented to the council last month when the city's environmental sustainability staff presented its update on the progress that it has made on the environmental sustainability plan that was voted into effect by you two and a half years ago. This document outlined actions that have either been only partially enacted or not addressed at all. This document that you have all previously received demonstrated that only around 30% give or take of the plan has been enacted. This is not going to get us where we want to be in 2030 at all. Let me be clear, this is not due to staff not working hard and to its best and very considerable ability, but it is a result of an understaffed department and program. I recall one of the activities we did in the Bellevue Essentials class where we had to identify priorities for funds. This was no easy task, but what is clear is that we have the funds to address what we prioritize. I ask that the council keep the success of our environmental sustainability initiative front and center in their priorities when considering the next two-year budget by providing more funds for more staff to be able to accomplish what you set out to do back in December 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. The next speaker on the list is Court Olson. And Mr. Olson, I also do not see you identified by name virtually. If you are participating with a phone, can you use star nine to raise your hand? Mr. Olson? Okay, that must not be you. Okay, next speaker, we will go to Barbara Braun again. Do not see you identified by name. If you are on the call, please use star nine to raise your hand. Do not see Ms. Braun either. And, oh, I do see a hand now. Ms. Braun or Mr. Olson? I don't want to call your number out on the record, but if you are wanting to speak in the public hearing, can you, do you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Braun, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. It's a little difficult, and audio on tonight's meeting is a little bit muffled. Anyway, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, Mr. Miyake, and other city leaders for the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara Braun, and I live in Bellevue. The residents of Bellevue greatly appreciate the city's recent efforts to advance the 2020 Environmental Stewardship Plan. We applaud the inclusion of climate and the environment in the city's stated top priorities. That said, it is clear we are falling further behind other King County cities in our investments to implement our ESP, and we are currently not on pace to meet our city's community-wide greenhouse gas reduction commitment of 50% by 2030. We applaud that the city is committing to catching up on tree preservation and protection. Trees are vitally important to our quality of life and to helping mitigate heating from increased urbanization, but trees don't reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Bellevue states 92% of greenhouse gas emissions come from two sources, buildings and transportation. While the city is investing millions to grow quickly, the city is woefully under-invested in what we citizens view as a fundamental. Protecting and preserving our climate should be viewed as a basic city service, like water, like sewage, like roads, paid for by taxes and provided by all levels of government. Bellevue residents are asking you to step up to deliver its climate commitments. To do this, the ESP needs to be fully funded and staffed quickly to build the necessary city capacity and required, capacity required to create the programs needed to implement the plan. We request the city bring its spending in line to that of other similar-sized cities who are making progress on greenhouse gas reduction. Specifically, there should be a minimum of eight full-time staff and a budget of at least $2 million a year. In addition, the city should take every advantage of the state grants and other monies available to accelerate climate actions, such as those for implementing the House Bill 1099. While other cities say we don't, sorry, while some city leaders say we don't have the budget for climate, I challenge you to look deeply at this and consider our spending priorities. We are making plenty of less urgent investments that could be slowed or deprioritized to make room for this minimal investment in our future. The entire world agrees we must invest in climate now. Every locality and every jurisdiction must participate, and this is exactly in line with our priorities and plans. Let our legacy be, we did our part on climate, and not, we built as much as possible and installed more ball fields. Please be creative and find a way to fund the ESP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Kristi Weir, I have you on the list as the next speaker. Do you have additional budget comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Olson, I'm going to circle back to you. Court Olson, can you hear me? And if so, can you use star nine to raise your hand and identify yourself? Mr. Olson, is that you? Mr. Olson? Okay, there's a 425 phone number that has a hand raised. Can you identify yourself, please? We're going to circle back. At this point, I do not have any additional pre-registered speakers. I'll do one more call-out for Chris Marks. If you are connected, can you please raise your hand? Again, Ms. Marks, is this you? Okay. Not quite sure what's happening there. At this point, that is the end of our registered speakers list. If there is anyone else joining us in council chambers this evening, or anyone else connected to the Zoom call, if you would like to make comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand using star nine if you're connected with a phone or the raise hand function in Zoom. if you're connected with a phone or the raise hand function in Zoom. And we do not have any additional hands, Mayor. Pardon me, someone just raised their hand. Someone identified as Josh, can you hear me? Josh, can you hear me? You should have an unmute prompt on your phone. You're unmuted now. Can you, Josh? Okay, I do see another additional hand, 425 phone number. If you can hear me, can you please speak? Okay. One more circle back for Josh. Josh, can you hear me? Okay. Mayor, I do not believe that we can hear Josh or this other identified person that's raising their hand. I would encourage you to email your comments to the council@bellevuewa.gov. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you at this point.
Yeah, I think I probably speak for the entire council when I say it's really disappointing when we can't hear the public at an event like this. And I know that's not your fault, Charmaine, when you're doing everything you can, but I hope that we can get staff to look at the situation and try to fix this for next time. If it was just one person, I would think it was them, but clearly there's something really complicated or off about our system. So, we need to provide more opportunity for people to weigh in. But thank you for recommending people email the council. Look forward to getting the comments on our email. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right. We are at 7:15. I think we'll take a break. We'll take a break till 7:25. Welcome back. We have two study session items left. And Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the first one?
Chair, thank you, Mayor, council members. The first topic is the Planning Commission's Recommended Land Use Code Amendment establishing regulations for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters. And by way of background, these amendments are in response to amendments to the state law, which occurred in the 2021 legislative session under House Bill 1220. Joining us this evening is the Chair of our Planning Commission, Mohammed Malakouchian. Also joining us is Liz Stead, interim co-director, Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Planning Manager, and Caleb Miller, Senior Planner, all three from the Development Services Department. Tonight, we are seeking direction from the council to bring back an ordinance at a future council meeting to adopt the proposed land use code amendments. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the staff.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and council members. We are happy to be at council tonight presenting a proposed land use code amendment to allow and regulate permanent supportive housing, transitional housing and non-transient emergency housing in all land use districts where residential uses or hotels and motels are allowed. This Luca, when approved, will replace an interim official control that council first approved in July of 2021 and extended in January of 2022 to respond to state requirements to allow and regulate permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and shelters. The current IOC will expire in July, necessitating some action by council. Staff is here tonight asking direction from council to bring back the Luca ordinance as drafted for final action at a future meeting. Our presentation this evening will provide council with further background, information about the impetus for the proposed Luca, the process and schedule for the planning commission that staff has followed to date, more information about the public engagement that has occurred so far in the process and the planning commission recommendation. And lastly, there will be more in-depth information about the components of the proposed Luca. The land use code amendment that comes forward tonight will be presented by staff and the Planning Commission Chair, Malakouchian. The Planning Commission has worked diligently on this Luca to be able to present their thoughtful recommendations to council for your consideration. We look forward to the conversation tonight with council and I will pass the presentation on to Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Planning Manager, to continue.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, members of the council. As Liz noted, this Luca before council this evening was designed to respond to recent changes in state law. So, there were amendments to RCW 35A 21430. Those amendments required for cities to allow for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in all land use districts where residential dwellings or hotels and motels are allowed and then allow for emergency housing and emergency shelter in all land use districts where hotels are allowed. The law also allows for reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use requirements to be imposed on these housing types to protect public health and safety. However, the additional requirements may not prohibit the siting of these housing types or prevent the siting of a sufficient number of these housing types. The law did become effective in July of 2021. Council adopted an interim official control ordinance to timely respond to the change in state law and conform the land use code to those changes. In December, December 13th, council extended the IOC until July 12, 2022. And of course, this Luca, as mentioned earlier, will replace the IOC. So, the four housing types that are addressed by the RCW and that are also addressed in this Luca are shown here on this slide. So, if you look at this slide, basically, the housing types on the left are more of those long-term, stable housing types. And then the ones on the right are housing types that have a shorter duration of stay. So, these four housing types are also distinguished in this way with the state law by the ones on the left allowed in all districts where residential dwellings are allowed as well as where hotels and motels are allowed. And the housing types that are listed in that right column, the emergency housing and emergency shelter, are allowed just where hotels and motels are allowed. So, permanent supportive housing is a subsidized housing with no limit on the length of stay. This housing type is leased to people that were experiencing homelessness or are at risk of experiencing homelessness. And it's a housing type that provides support services that are really intended to keep tenants in housing permanently. Transitional housing is very similar to permanent supportive housing and it provides that transition to tenants into independent housing arrangements. And then on the right side, for emergency housing, it's really intended to address daily basic needs of residents such as water, food, hygiene, really addressing kind of that acute need for housing. And then emergency shelter is more of a short-term shelter for people experiencing homelessness. That also includes the day centers and overnight shelters. So, the interim official control, as mentioned earlier, was adopted in July to quickly respond to changes to state law. The public hearing for this interim official control was held in August and the interim official control, essentially it amended the land use tables to call out these housing types specifically in our use charts so that these would be allowed where the state law requires them to be allowed. And the interim official control points to the RCW definition for those four housing types. The proposed Luca before council establishes a new definition for supportive housing that is consistent with the RCW and we'll go into more details about that definition in a later slide. It also utilizes the existing homeless services uses to provide a permitting path for transient emergency housing as well as emergency shelter. And for supportive housing, it establishes new requirements that apply to certain supportive housing locations. So, all of these additional requirements were not included with the IOC that council has reviewed in the past and has extended. So, the additional requirements that were, that are now included with the recommended Luca include for supportive housing, certain locations, the more intensive uses, safety and security plan requirement, a resident code of conduct as well as a standard operating procedure. So, the IOC again was first adopted in July of 2021. It is set to expire in July 12 of 2022 and this Luca, of course, will repeal and replace the IOC. So, just a quick overview on the Luca process and schedule that led up to tonight's meeting. As mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission has had thoughtful deliberations about this Luca over the course of five study sessions as well as a public hearing. There were three study sessions leading up to the public hearing and then two study sessions that were held after the public hearing before recommending this Luca to council tonight. We have a study session tonight to go over the components of the Luca and as mentioned earlier, the Chair of the Planning Commission is here to present the Planning Commission recommendation. And then we would expect council action at a future date. And then, of course, the IOC does expire on July 12. So, in terms of public engagement for this Luca, the public engagement included our standard process for requirements that are mandated by the code. So, those include the noticing within the weekly permit bulletin, which is published in the Seattle Times, and then the public hearing, which also has its own noticing requirements as well as the SEPA process that falls with this Luca. In addition to the process for requirements, staff did also engage with service providers and supportive housing operators before the Luca was recommended or was brought to the Planning Commission for discussion. And a lot of the providers, they have a lot of experience in operations of this housing type and so they were really helpful in helping us kind of understand the right type of approach for this housing type. And then at the public hearing, we also had a fair amount of engagement. So, there were 18 speakers that attended the public hearing and there were 71 written comments that were submitted on the night of the public hearing or in the days just leading up to the public hearing. So, this Luca did have a fair amount of public interest. Many of the commenters were objecting to the city allowing for homeless shelters in single-family neighborhoods. So, staff did spend a bit of time during the public hearing as well as the two subsequent study sessions to explain the difference between supportive housing and homeless shelters because there is a distinction both in law than how our land use code approach has been. There is also a belief amongst some residents that these housing types are dangerous or would negatively impact the health, safety and welfare of those nearby. There were some suggestions to treat homeless, or sorry, supportive housing like a homeless shelter, so applying our full homeless service uses requirements to those, to the, to supportive housing uses, including requiring conditional use permits, good neighborhood agreement advisory committee, Bellevue police involvement for reviewing of documents and other measures. So, because of the amount of public comment that was received at the public hearing, the Planning Commission did want to hold additional study sessions to discuss potential modifications to the Luca to address concerns that were raised by the public. So, in response to public concern, the Planning Commission chose to include for more intensive supportive housing locations, a requirement for a safety and security plan, standard operating procedures as well as a resident code of conduct. And the Luca also followed our typical path of providing a city webpage. We did keep that webpage up to date as the Luca progressed. It also included staff contacts so people could ask any questions or provide written comment throughout the process and it kept everyone up to date as to when this Luca would be headed to council. And so with that, I will turn this over to Chair Malakouchian to walk us through the Planning Commission recommendation.
Thank you so much. Great to be here and hi to everyone, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. So, good to see you all in person. Before I start giving our report to you, I need to thank city staff for having six session with us in this, for this Luca and also public for providing all of their comments, written or coming to our public hearing or sessions. We have had many engagements and received many feedbacks. During the six sessions, we heard from many stakeholders. As Nick mentioned, majority, many, some like this Luca and they are a fan of treating this supportive housing as a housing. And there are others that they are really concerned about having this supportive housing and what happened to the safety, neighborhood compatibility and community engagement. Our framework in all of our session was having, treat these supportive housing as something that we need, as essential, as a type that we need in City of Bellevue. Treat them as a housing, but in order, but also listen to the public's and address their concerns about the safety, about the neighborhood compatibility and some concerns that they had for having them in their neighborhood. So, in April 27th unanimously, our commission recommend this Luca to you with some recommendation, as Nick mentioned. Now, before we have this supportive housing open, we are requiring a safety and security plan. We are requiring the resident code of conduct. And finally, we are requiring a standard operating procedure before we can let this housing open. The Planning Commission's recommendation was based on finding that this Luca is going to meet all of decision criteria of Land Use Code 2030J 130 and also is consistent with a comprehensive plan, enhance the public safety and welfare and is not contrary to interests of the citizen of Bellevue and the people of the Bellevue and the businesses. So, that's my recommend, that's our recommendation and by that I give back to you to finish us.
Thank you, Chair. So, next we will get into the particular components of the recommended Luca. It can be divided into three topic areas as shown here, which we'll just jump right into it. So, the first topic area is to define the various housing uses within the RCW into the land use code. The recommended Luca divides them into two categories. The first is supportive housing and the second is homeless services uses. This distinction is generally based on the duration of stay and the intensity of these uses and it generally tracks with state law and how the land use code divvies up residential or regulates residential uses, again, based on the duration of stay. As Nick mentioned, supportive housing is intended to be long-term, stable housing. Generally, they have individualized services and these would include permanent supportive housing, transitional housing and non-transient emergency housing. On the other side, we have homeless services uses, which is an existing land use in the code. There is generally a higher rate of turnaround for these uses with the duration of stay ranging from less than a day to at least, or up to 30 days. And with that, people coming and going from the site, lots of staff, et cetera. I'll also note the services for homeless services uses are more general and tend to be more basic in nature. Just a note on the emergency housing, you may have noticed the, there is a distinction between transient and non-transient emergency housing. And this is to take into account the fact that this type of housing varies widely in its duration of stay from just a few days up to several months. In order to fit this within the context of the land use code, staff recommended a distinction of transient and non-transient. With non-transient being placed in the supportive housing category as a longer-term duration of stay tends to be less intensive. Again, fewer people coming and going from the site every day, a little more stable, a little more stability. The next topic area is the land use tables. The The Luca inserts supportive housing and homeless services uses into the existing land use tables in the land use code. And these show which districts in which these uses would be allowed, either as a permitted use or a conditional use. Supportive housing itself is a, is listed as a permitted use in all residential and hotel and motel districts. Additionally, the land use table does have a new footnote pointing to LUC 2020 845, which lists the new requirements applicable to supportive housing. On the right, we have homeless services uses, which are already listed in the land use tables. And these have already been listed in most of the districts where hotels and motels are allowed, except for neighborhood mixed use, office limited business, open space, Evergreen Highlands D and the East Main districts. So those have been updated to list homeless services uses as a conditional use. Otherwise, there are no proposed changes to the homeless services uses requirements or procedures. All of that is remaining the same under the recommended Luca. The final bit of, the final component of the Luca is the specific requirements applicable to supportive housing. And I'll start with the exemptions. These are really meant to take into account the less intensive supporting, supportive housing uses already in Bellevue. We know that there are already some existing in single family neighborhoods. These typically have, operate and function just like a residential use, just like a single family home. And with that, we developed these exemptions. So first would be for any facility that has supportive services onsite as a subordinate use. And under the land use code, that is defined as less than 25% of the floor area dedicated to that activity. The next would be facilities with no onsite services are exempt from the registration notice requirements. And then finally, facilities that need confidentiality due to the population served. This has been set up in the code to track with any organizations or individual, or sites that house individuals in the Washington State Address Confidentiality Program. And this is intended primarily for victims of crimes and other people who might need some privacy in their addresses being distributed. For those that aren't exempt, registration requirement is proposed. Really, this is intended to track the newer, the new, more intensive supportive housing sites. This is a similar process for other intensive residential uses, such as rooming houses and short-term rentals. How this would work is that the applicant would submit a registration form at least 14 days prior to opening this new supportive housing use. This would come with a registration form that has general information, like contact information of the property owner, the supportive housing's provider and any affiliated service providers. And there are, the planning commission recommended additional supplemental submittal materials such as a safety and security plan, a resident code of conduct and standard operating procedures. I will take this opportunity to note the strike draft or attachment seen in your packet does list Bellevue Police Department review of the safety and security plan. This was actually not recommended by the planning commission and so it was included as an error in your packet. But otherwise, all of these additional requirements would, were taken from the homeless services uses code. And yeah, moving on, the following registration, the notice would be distributed to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. This would include just general information listed on the registration form, again, contact information, names of the service providers and so on. And this would facilitate transparency around the operations of the site. And the final section of components, this first one applies to all supportive housing sites regardless of the exemptions listed prior, in the prior slide. And this would be a kitchen requirement that must be provided onsite. And this is in order, this is necessary to ensure that, you know, this residential use can function as a residential use, that the people who live there have what they need to, to live, to fully live there. They don't need to live the site, leave the site in order to get, have their needs met. For supportive housing in single family districts specifically, this would, this would again include all supportive housing regardless of exemptions. On-site services may only be available to residents of that site and no alterations to the residential character of the structure would be allowed. And this first one was really meant to control for intensity, so there are no outside people coming to the single family area to, to get services. Again, that's a really people coming and going all day. It's an intensity issue. And then the alterations to residential character is a control for design, just to maintain neighborhood compatibility. And that is all we have for you. Again, our staff are seeking direction for the council to direct us to bring the Luca ordinance as drafted for final action at a future meeting. And with that, I'll pass it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Will you put up the slide again? Do you have one slide that shows the recommendations from the planning commission?
It might not have the specific recommendations, just an overview of their discussion. Is there a?
Go over to maybe slide.
I think it was this one? Oh, okay.
Yeah, this one. I think this is helpful. So what we have before us is an opportunity to discuss the, what the planning commission has brought forward to us. And it's not about whether or not to have this kind of housing in our city. It's what requirements we are going to have when we put it in. So I'll limit the discussion of that a little bit, but thank you Chair Malakushian for being here and for chairing all the tough discussions that you had at your end. Appreciate the recommendation from the planning commission.
I appreciate it.
So I'm going to open this up. Is there anybody interested in commenting or questioning? Councilmember Robertson, start with you.
So first I wanted to thank Chair Malakushian and staff and planning commission and the public and the stakeholders for engagement on this. It was a lot of, now, I was not there for the first three meetings. I think Councilwoman Barstow was liaison then, but I was there for the end and listened to a lot of the conversations. This was a tough, tough issue. And I don't know how many pages of public comment we got, but certainly at least 200. Does anyone know off the top of their head? I mean, we got hundreds of pages of comment over the time. People were very, very engaged in this. I'm really surprised to see not a lot of people here tonight. So I think that the, the discussion was really good. I, the planning commission, although they unanimously supported this, they did not all agree on every point. And so it was a lot of close calls. So, you know, I, I'm very grateful for the work done. I, as you know, the council reserves the right to make amendments. I think we need to make some amendments to this. And I think that that's, has to be squarely in the council's lap. So one of the things that I've been thinking about, and I really appreciated the planning commission adding the safety and security plan, the code of conduct, the standard operating procedures. And I've been looking at what other cities do. As you all know, I, this is what I do for a living. I've drafted at least six of these codes for other cities. So I've looked at what all sorts of other cities have done. And I was looking at the Redmond code recently and they have very clear standards. I think we need a little more meat on the bones. Their operating, standard operating procedures have very clear provisions, including making sure that these kind of uses are really integrated with what the city's doing. So they are integrated with the homeless outreach that the city is doing. The standard operating procedures require the services to be provided. As you may know, permanent supportive housing is for people that need supportive services. And if they're not getting the supportive services, then the type of housing doesn't really do what it should do. It also requires police to look at the safety and security plan. They require there to be, you know, the providers to work with the city to make sure that the people in Redmond or who have ties to the area are the ones that are brought in to these types of facilities. Under the state law, one of the standards was that we needed to make sure that we didn't do things that prohibit us from having enough of these to serve the needs of the city. Not to serve all of King County, not to serve all of Western Washington, but to serve the needs of the city. And so I thought Redmond's approach was really smart because they are working it so that they will serve the needs of the city. So I, I know that tonight's just our first intro to this. I definitely am going to have some recommended revisions to it. And I guess I can stop there and let folks, other folks talk, but I think making sure that these are integrated well and that we make sure that these facilities fit in the neighborhoods where they go is going to be really important. I guess I'll just have a couple more comments. To that end, there's density requirements in all of our zones. The code, the proposed code allows exceptions for these types of facilities. A different kind of housing unit might have to meet the density facility or density requirements, but these have exceptions. So I, I don't understand that. I would like us, if they're going to fit, they need to fit. So I, I'd like to get rid of that. I also, so that they have the same dwelling units per acre as the underlying zone. Also, one of the things that staff recommended early on in the process was to have limitations on the number of bedrooms or residents in the single family homes. That was removed. And I think about this, I think about the fact that we have adult family homes in single family homes. And people complain about them because they tend to be oversized, they grow bigger so that they can serve them. But those are considered a truly residential use. I believe under federal law, the limit is six residents and people, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we should have similar type standards as the adult family homes for permanent supportive housing in the single family neighborhoods. That would be very fair and it would make them fit better. So yeah, and I'm not so crazy about these, the first two exceptions, the third absolutely on this slide. So I'd like to put a little more meat on the bones. I'd like to look at the standard operating procedures that Redmond has, including their requirements, their safety and security plan. They, and actually, they have far more robust density and separation requirements, a half mile apart for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and 1,000 feet for emergency shelters. I'm not necessarily suggesting that, but this is Redmond and they're right next door. They serve the same population we do and they are very thoughtful as we are about some of this. So anyway, I'll stop there.
Can I ask you to clarify something I got that you'd like to look at truing up to Redmond's codes? You want the police review of safety and security plan. You'd like to prioritize in-city residents. You don't want any density exceptions and you want to limit the number of residents in permanent supportive housing. There is one other thing.
In single family zones, yeah. What was the other one? I guess this exemptions, the exemptions to the supportive housing requirements, the facilities needing confidentiality should have an exemption. I'm not sure why we would exempt ones that have services in them and service, and ones with no services. That seems to be exempting pretty much all of, most of single family home supportive housing requirements from these standards. So that's where I am on it. I can add more later and when this comes back, I will, I want to hear what my colleagues say, but I will have specific proposed amendments drafted. But I did not have that today, so.
That's good. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Barstow.
Thank you, Chair and staff for the work on this Luca. It's definitely been a long journey, but appreciate the persistence. I guess, you know, just generally thinking about our, I think we had a conversation earlier about our providers and their intent to really help house our vulnerable, the vulnerable members of our community. And we've had conversations around CUP and the amount of time it takes and the costs associated with a conditional use permit. And I did go back and listen to the April 27th meeting and I know there were some questions or comments raised about, you know, do we need a safety and security plan because Bellevue PD is already going to have their own safety and security plan? While I really enjoy the motorcycles, they are distracting. And also that the code of conduct, it may not be necessary because of, as was, as we also heard during public comment in terms of, they already, tenants already signed a lease. So I guess I'm really interested in how we make it lower the barrier for the development of this housing that we are, that we need. I know we are looking at other cities, the conditions or the environment in those cities. I think we should take that into account if we're going to compare policies across cities. I think Redmond may be in a better position in terms of housing that they already provide for their community. I think we have a, a large need of transitional housing and, and supportive housing. And so, and given our role in the region, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we provide that housing. And I don't think it's at the cost of engaging the community, as I understand, as, when they register, there, there's going to be notice anyway to the community members. So I guess I would really like to understand where, where that balance is so that we're not inhibiting the development of the housing that we, that we need and what's actually needed to main, to make sure that, you know, we're addressing the concerns in the community.
So Councilmember Barstow, I mean, that's, those are the exact issues that the planning commission was weighing as they were deliberating on this Luca. And there are a lot of factors that they were considering. I mean, the, the mandate by the state to allow for these housing types with that discretion that you can provide requirements that are reasonable in terms of how you regulate for occupancy, spacing and intensity of use. And so there was also a lot of discussion on, on the existing land use code framework that the city has in place in terms of how we, we regulate for intensity of use. So there's that distinction between transient and non-transient that has been applied to this Luca. And with the, the comment regarding the conditional use permit process, to clarify, the conditional use permit process is applicable to emergency housing transient. And so again, getting at that more intensity of use issue of having greater turnover at those types of locations. And so the homeless services uses framework and permitting path is applied to that type of housing. But supportive housing, transitional housing and emergency housing, non-transient, has been, per the planning commission discussion and direction, to be treated very similar to a residential use with the, the exceptions that have been provided here for additional kind of measures that spoke to some of the concerns that the public was raising. So the planning commission did feel that that was the appropriate amount of additional oversight that would be warranted for these housing types. There are also supportive housing uses that exist in the city today. The Eastgate campus has a larger supportive housing facility that was permitted as a residential use. Mary's Place in downtown Bellevue is a transitional housing location that was permitted through the IOC as a permitted use. And there are also more than, or about a dozen or so, single family locations throughout the residential areas in the city where we have not received many complaints. I think we checked the record based on planning commission's kind of ask of us. There were two complaints that, that were filed on those properties. Both of those complaints relate to the number of residents living within the home. And so those complaints have, have been resolved, but there wasn't at least clear information in the record for staff or the planning commission to kind of move us into a direction of providing additional layers of requirements based on their discussions.
If I may add, Councilmember Barstow, I think you had a great question and the question is eventually what is the balance between treating them as completely housing or treating them as completely a shelter and have all of those rules and regulation? I think the balance that after six session, we came to the, to the conclusion after hearing all of the public comment is treating them as a housing, but have at least some safety and some regulation that address the public need. So the balance that you are asking is what we are proposing after the six comments. Treating them as a housing, as you mentioned, let them to be easier, to have them not go through all of the process that is, make them costly, make them very time, time duration long, but also have some requirements, have some regulation that make the public adoption of this easier in that neighborhood.
I guess when I think about the, as we've talked about in the past, the conditional use permit, I guess I'm struggling with seeing that as a balance, I guess, because.
You don't have that for supportive housing?
Let me see.
For supportive housing?
No, but for the other, for the.
For the shelter, for the.
For the transitional housing.
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked about it in, in other Luca discussions about it being prohibitive and so. And so, I'll just raise that point. I mean, we can move on, but that's my concern.
Is there a place to discuss previous decisions that we made for the shelter and transient housing? Council, Mr. City Manager?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was just looking up. Can you repeat the question?
Is there room in this, on this agenda to be discussing previous decisions that we have made about emergency shelters and emergency transient housing?
We could certainly come back and provide that information. I don't know if the staff is prepared to discuss that tonight, though.
Okay, well, maybe we can include that in our next discussion. Okay, I have Council, Deputy Mayor next. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And Chairman Al Kusian and staff and the entire Planning Commission, thanks for all the great work on this. As noted previously, a lot of work, a lot of comments, and I appreciate you engaging so much in the community that is, you know, very concerned about this impact to their single-family neighborhood. So really appreciate that. I also appreciate Councilmember Robertson's comments about the city of Redmond's code. And quite frankly, I don't care where the code comes from, Walla Wallace, Gwynne, wherever, as long as it's best practice and it works for Bellevue, I want to look at it. And this certainly seems like it. But having said that, there are other cities that have taken similar approaches, the more I look into this. So for example, the city of Kent requires a minimum separation of 1,000 feet between emergency housing sites and supportive housing. The city of Burien, they make sure that their permits, smaller facilities with less intensive use in residential zones, and then those that are larger facilities, those go in the more intensive use in the commercial zone. So, you know, I think all these neighboring cities are concerned about, I think more about this, the intensity in those single-family neighborhoods. I think that's where this, a lot of this is being driven, this concern. Yes, we hear about the code of conduct and the safety and security, but I think that intensity that can really sprout up and really impact that neighborhood very, very quickly is, I think, what we're hearing, and that really affects quality of life. And as anyone will tell you, the soul of Bellevue is in our neighborhood, so we need to listen to it, and I'm really glad that you did. Couple of questions for you. Now, you mentioned that in the packet or in the strike edition, there, it says that the safety and security plan should be approved by Bellevue Police Department, but it shouldn't have been in there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm just curious why that decision was made not to include that in there? It's one of my questions. And then, as well as the mail to property owners within 500 feet, I'm wondering why that's not 1,000, where we got the 500 from? And then, and just in general, the communications plan, because I think as we've learned before, transparency with this is so key. And if residents are surprised by any of this, I just think it really behooves us right now to be as transparent as possible about what's happening, even though, yes, it's a state mandate. There's really, you know, there's some things we can do, but we have to implement this one way or another. But again, I'm really seeing it from a transparency issue. I really want to make sure residents understand what's happening in their neighborhood and how it's going to affect them. So if you could address those three issues, I'd appreciate that.
I do my best and then our amazing staff here to complete whatever I am not covering. I think eventually, it goes back, our discussion to two things. What is a good balance between not making, not adding so many barriers for this housing type that make them impossible to open and serve the community, and also making it easier for public to accept them, and as you mentioned, to welcome those housing? So that's the first piece I wanted to emphasize again. And the second thing was a purpose. What are we achieving, for example, by having a meeting with the community before that? So we discuss all of these in tense. For example, the, for the community engagement and having a meeting prior to opening this, we discuss what is the purpose, and the conclusion was, the purpose maybe actually deserve and maybe make more agitated neighborhood for that. And we are already sending the letter, so they are already know, but having that meeting, because they don't have any saying, they cannot say, "We don't accept this housing here," the public. So we realize having that meeting maybe doesn't serve any purpose that we intend and we have the same kind of thought process that you had, but based on our discussion, we kind of cross that. So basically, these two things. What is the great balance to make it feasible, to make it not impossible to have this type of housing, and having the safety and concern of the public? And also, what is the purpose of having that if it doesn't serve it very well? But I reach out to you guys for the 500 feet and 1,000, and what, how we came up with that number.
Sure. The 500-foot notice mailing radius is pretty standard among all of the required notice in the code, so that's really where it was pulled from. And let's see, the last question, could you remind me?
Oh, just the overall communications plan.
The engagement plan for...
Communicator engagement, yeah.
For community education, I think you said.
Exactly, thank you, yes. Beyond, you know, the mailing.
For supportive housing, yeah, we, that's something we certainly wrestled with as the Chair was discussing. The way that the LUCA is set up, we, and with supportive housing being a permitted use in all of the applicable land use districts, having, you know, as the Chair was discussing, a community meeting ahead of the, ahead of opening probably wouldn't accomplish anything. So the notice was really meant to inform the neighbors of these coming uses. There wasn't a lot of discussion beyond that in terms of what more could be done. We did talk a lot about that community meeting requirement, though. Nick and Liz, do you have anything to add?
Can I just interrupt for a quick second? Look, you just made a really interesting comment. You didn't, so you don't think that a community meeting would accomplish anything? But wouldn't it, by its very nature, inform people that...
Well, sorry, it wouldn't accomplish anything beyond...
...supportive housing would be going in their neighborhood?
I misspoke there. It wouldn't accomplish anything beyond what a notice would do. It would be informational only.
Gotcha.
There wouldn't be an agreement among all parties at the end of the day, so apologies.
Deputy Mayor might add a little bit more information on that. Just the 500 feet, that is consistent with all of our other noticing requirements, the land use code. So we always, where we can, try and keep consistency for ease of administration as well as predictability. But secondarily, in terms of the community meeting, we do say that, you know, most of these are, in this code, are being treated as housing. And we certainly don't have a community meeting for an apartment building that's coming in when it's, you know, four units or something like that. So really, again, this is consistent with how we are treating other housing types. That would, the exception to that, of course, would be those projects that are larger and have more intensity of use. So those projects that have over 25% of their floor area being devoted to, you know, some sort of ancillary use, those types, yes, we would, there would be some meeting and a registration, but for a lot of these, and that would be through the conditional use permit process. But most of these, we would treat as housing, as an apartment would be normally done. There could be some underlying code requirement for design review, or they could be in what we call transitional area, where a design review would also apply. And in that circumstance, we would have a public meeting as we do for the general underlying process.
Right, okay, thank you. And I appreciate all your answers. Good to know, just kind of your thought process, how you came to these conclusions, so thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate learning about these different pieces and just how much effort the Planning Commission and staff put into what we're seeing in front of us. I appreciate the very intentional view of, in fact, if you go to the previous slide, of differentiating between homeless shelters and supportive housing. There is a difference between shelter and housing. So I really appreciate the fact that you've looked at it from that lens, because we do get comments that seem to conflate the two, and they are not the same. So I appreciate that. I like the pieces in there about services for onsite residents, having either a kitchen in the units or having shared kitchen within the communal spaces, and the, and then from the outside facing of the buildings or the housing that it, the alterations still fit the residential character, because I think that that's a really important curbside view of the housing. So I really appreciate those pieces. I appreciate the notice to the community about the supportive housing that's going to be going in from a good neighbor courtesy standpoint. So I like that as well. With that said, though, there are a couple things that I'm trying to understand. One is what the mayor brought up, which is, I couldn't find it in our packet, and I was trying to find the previous meeting. So perhaps that, just as a mayor said, I know we had previous council direction. In fact, we had a lot of discussion when 1220 was first adopted. And in fact, on this very dais, we talked about whether we should add these things into our land use code. I thought that staff went away and reviewed what might be possible, and that ultimately we came back with the pieces around the code of conduct and safety plan as some best practices, but not necessarily, and that we voted on the fact that they were best practices. And yet, this has come back as a conditional use, which, as Councilmember Barksdale talked about, appeared a bit inconsistent with where, the last time I paid attention to this on the dais, we had talked about. So while I really appreciate the conversations that have happened since then, I do want to understand how the organizations that are serving those vulnerable communities, that the supportive housing would be helping. We certainly heard from two of them today in public testimony that some of the pieces that we put in place appear to be inconsistent with 1220's intent, and that it potentially creates some barriers to supportive housing. So I would like to understand a bit more or be reminded of the previous conversations we had here, because I thought they were pretty robust conversations, and that we had taken an approach and a path that does include those pieces around the safety plan and code of conduct and whatnot, but not in this venue. And I would say that when I think about review of the code of conduct and safety plans and whatnot, I'd like to think that it is broader than the police department looking at them, because at the end of the day, we've spent a lot of time talking about the fact that when we have needs from the community for supportive services, it's broader than just a police presence. So I want to make sure that as we think about the most vulnerable in our community, that we're reflecting all of those lenses. And Liz, as you said, that we are also consistent with how we're treating housing, no different than our neighbors' housing that may also have individuals living in there that might have supportive housing needs. Thanks.
Nick, could you provide a little more information about when the conditional use permit would apply? And then also, a little bit about how we would be taking in a registration and what that would mean for those projects that do not fall under the conditional use permit requirement?
Sure. So Councilmembers on, the slide that's in front of us here is distinguished between the supportive housing, which, again, the land use code amendment that's before council includes transitional housing, non-transient emergency housing, and supportive housing under that definition of supportive housing, the broader definition. And everything that falls under that definition, regardless of intensity of use, is permitted. That's an allowed use in all districts where we allow for residential uses and hotel motel districts. So the CUP requirement that some commenters were speaking about, and what the Eastside Affordable Housing Convening wrote in about, was the conditional use permit requirement that we are applying to emergency housing transient. And so, the emergency housing type that is for more of that short-term stay. And so, the approach that the Planning Commission took with this was, the short-term stay emergency housing is more akin to a homeless shelter in that there is that higher rate of turnover. And so, the conditional use permit process and the land use code that was developed to regulate homeless service uses was that decided framework to permit, as well as to require certain elements of that development as it was allowed in the city. And so, the CUP requirement, conditional use permit requirement applies to the emergency housing transient, but the non-transient is a permitted use outright. And then, some of the discussion about the BMPs, as City Manager Miyaki mentioned, we can bring back more information about that. There was discussion about which items are going to be addressed through BMPs and which items should be addressed through the code, with that kind of acknowledgement that the land use code isn't the only tool to treat this type of housing. And so, this code that's before the city council does follow that direction in terms of, we haven't included items in the LUCA that were kind of sorted into a BMP, for example. And so, we did try to ensure that, as the Planning Commission was deliberating on this, that we kept those separate intentionally so that we weren't confusing the two, the two topics there. If that clarifies, if you have other questions, though, happy to respond.
And how did we decide on 30 days?
So the 30 days is the framework in the code that exists today. So we have transit uses, transient uses in the city that apply to other types of housing, like boarding houses, rooming houses. Those all have a distinguisher of 30 days. That's what the land use code framework has established as, something that should be treated a little differently than your traditional or typical single-family residence or dwelling unit. And so, that distinction is consistent with how we've treated other types of housing based on duration of stay.
Okay, I don't have any more questions right now. Would like to see what we had before. I was having trouble finding the documents, because it wasn't referenced.
I'll go ahead. I'm bubbling up with ideas here, and I need to get them out before, and then Councilmember Lee. So to Councilmember Zon's good point, I don't believe that any of these prerequisites should be a condition of permits. I don't think we should be asking for permission to do things that legally we're obliged to do. So I like what we, the requirements in some ways, some of them, and I'll go through what I like and what I don't necessarily like, but I don't think that any of them should be a condition of being permitted. So when we look at the exemptions, I would just wonder if we should be exempting properties with six or fewer residents in supportive housing? That's just a question I have. I'd like to know, you know, the value of the code of conduct versus the lease. I mean, I don't really understand what kind of information you give in a lease, and I don't know how those compare and contrast, so I'd like to understand that. And talking about the value of community engagement, and Chairman Al Kusian, you described an opinion that some of the members of your board expressed about community process. And my experience has been so different that I actually am very in favor of a community process, but not as a requirement for permitting. But I'm just going to say, I looked at, you know, I watched Mary's Place and their community process, and I could see how so many people who didn't have the information they needed were very opposed to what they were doing. But when they were educated as to what was happening, what the timeframe was, who was being helped, and how they might get involved even, it became very positive, and some of their biggest opponents ended up having fundraisers to help support the residents. I really worry that the people coming into this might face more opposition if the community is not aware of who they are and understand them a little better. So I kind of like to emulate what Mary's Place did with their outreach program, and I'll just read to you a little bit of what they do, but I can forward it to you as well. But they, they have a, they developed their outreach plan. It includes a schedule and a timeline, and they make a list of stakeholders. And this includes city and county contacts, elected... list of stakeholders. And this includes city and county contacts, elected officials, neighbors and neighborhood groups, community business organizations, faith-based organizations, other service providers, schools, et cetera, and others as identified by interviews. They draft their materials. They plan for community meetings, providing sufficient notice. It could be in-person or virtual and utilizes whatever outreach tactics they need. And then they implement that plan. They talk about the proposed site and the plans. They meet with the stakeholder groups. They hold community meetings and respond to questions and concerns. They have ongoing stakeholder outreach and relationship building where they share information about move-in dates. They provide contact information. They address any of the developing issues and concerns as needed and they hold an open house with information, volunteer opportunities, service provider opportunities and events. So that's, that's just an example of what Mary's Place does. And I was involved in their community outreach and I saw the tides turn on that and I, I was really impressed. So I would like to somehow, you know, include that in what we recommend or what we ask for of our, these organizations. And I think that was all that I had.
Thank you, Mary. I did briefly want to address, I think the BMPs might be a really good place for that community engagement expectation to put that out there. And it may be that it's scaled a little bit differently depending on how large the project is. You know, one family moving into a single-family home would have a very different expectation probably than a larger Mary's Place type thing. But I think there's, I did have a chance to review that prior to the meeting and they did some really good work. So we'll look at how we can bring that back.
Yeah, thank you. You made me think of something and I just forgot what it was. Oh, in terms of, you know, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, you know, 1,500 feet, I think that is just whoever you need to reach. And I think that the provider should be doing the outreach, not the city. Okay, Councilmember Lee followed by Councilmember Stokes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you, Chair Malkushin. All the work and your commission members that work on this. Six meetings. That's a lot of time, a lot of study sessions. And that's why I think that the study sessions are important for us as well. I mean, this is the first study session for us in that kind of depth. As you know, even the questions generated, you know, it takes a lot of discussion, understanding, dialogue just between the seven of us. And you have gone through all this and we are having the wisdom of your commissioner talking to the public. So I think this public outreach is very, very valuable. And I think that's one of the reasons why we are commissioned to help us, right? To do all that work. But, you know, unfortunately, when you make your report to us, we only have a lot less of time to really have a conversation with you if you have any questions. So I want to just upfront, thank you for doing that. But as we mentioned, though, it's important that we need to do it listening to the public. And you've done well by reaching out to the service providers and the, and operators of, of, you know, supportive housing. And you've heard from 70 or more inputs. This is a lot, a lot to go through. And based on that, I hope that, you know, you come up with your recommendation. And that's why we are hearing it the first time. So, so bear with us if we have questions for you. And this really, to me, is the first time we, I got to listen to all the other six councilmembers, you know, and, and you and the staff. So, so if we go through a lot of questions, be patient, okay? I, I do have a little bit of question with exemptions because just on the surface, I don't understand. I don't know what it is. So maybe, you know, explain a little bit. But my sense is that just, yeah, so number one, that's first. And just to give you a little bit of a background why I would ask is perhaps to begin the whole thing is people mention, you know, we compliment you for being intentional. It's important to be. And understanding what our goal is, it's important. So I, I want to know a little bit more. What do you think our goal really is? I hear some, some, sometimes maybe conflicting thoughts on it. And maybe we personally, two councilmembers, have maybe a different take on what really the, the goal, intention is. So we, we need to have that kind of discussion. So I want to ask that first and then, and then explain the exemption, whether we need it or what we don't. And then there's, out of that, I think would answer a number of questions. I, I think the mayor brought about, we'll, we'll get there when we do. But I just want to compliment, the mayor mentioned a good point that, you know, we want to make it, that it's simple. You know, you mentioned that make it less barrier. The question is, I always believe devil is in the detail. You know, when you, when you start talking about what is the last barrier, what is significant, what is most important, you know, we come to some conversations, maybe disagreements, you know, frankly, that's the case. But my goal is having the commission, which is led by you and all of us, I believe that we need to do it for the citizen of Bellevue. You know, do it the Bellevue way. Do it for our neighborhoods compatible with neighborhoods. Very important. You know, my perception, I can say it now, even though it's a state mandate, right? It's a, it's a law they gave it to us. It doesn't mean that we have to blindly follow. You know, we have, we can give modifications. We can get recommendations. We can make suggestions. There's a legislative process we can go through. So I just want to put that, at least that's what I believe in. Okay. And I think a lot of people in Bellevue believe that. Thank you. So if you can go ahead, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely. Great questions. I will start answering the, the question of you about the purpose, what we are doing that. And I think I'm going to hand out to city staff talking about those exemptions. So I, I think as, as everyone mentioned here, we have a vulnerable population in city of Bellevue that we need to serve. And for serving them, we need this different type of housing. As staff mentioned, we kind of separate them into supportive housing and emergency housing. Emergency housing, we side as a, as a homeless shelter. So we kind of apply those requirements that we have traditionally put for the, for the homeless shelter. On the supportive housing, we basically treat them as a housing because they are very permanent. They are, hopefully, we can house those vulnerable people for good. So we treat them as a housing. But after hearing many, many, many feedbacks of the neighborhood, we try to bring some framework of having some safety, having some security and having some kind of guidance that make it more regulation than just pure housing. So the main purpose is just addressing the city of Bellevue need to the most vulnerable population that they are now not housed. Hopefully by this kind of type of housing, we address those needs. But I hand back to city staff to address the exemptions.
Yeah. The exemptions were in response to a few different factors. First, as I noted, supportive housing already exists in Bellevue and we've seen, we've seen congregations for the homeless. For example, they have, they have plenty of supportive housing locations in single-family neighborhoods. And as Nick noted, we just don't have a record of, of code violations, nuisances and so on, coming from the existing supportive housing stock here. At the same time, this is also, the exemptions are also intensity control. They, sites with fewer onsite services or less space dedicated to those services will have fewer staff members associated with them, fewer people coming and going. And so these were really taken out of the requirements for registration and notice because they function very much just like a single-family home or, or even an apartment building if that were the context. So, so those were the two, I guess, back pieces to the exemptions there.
Can I follow up? Yeah, with regard to supportive housing, what did the community feel about this? First question. Second question, you mentioned we have to look at data, like need. So there's one thing that I heard, you know, one is our own need, city need, one is regional need. I think there's possibly some different thoughts. You know, we, we talk about, I think Bellevue, I think Councilmember Robinson mentioned, when Raymond, she used that as a model, is to meet Raymond's need. Okay. So I want to be sure that we are meeting Bellevue's need. Once we spend that, if our citizen says that we'll do more, then we can move forward. So by this time, I'm not sure what we have heard, what you have heard, Commissioner.
Yeah. So again, great question. What we have heard was all over the place. We heard from completely treat them as a housing, even for the shelter side, just remove all of the permitting and just in, because there is a huge population that we need to serve and the time is very sensitive. So just no barrier, even on the, not supportive housing, on the homeless shelter side, just remove all of the permitting. So that's one end of the feedbacks that we receive. And the other feedback, the other side is just adding as many barriers or not even having in any neighborhood or any residential because they just wanted to be, the perception is this sort of housing is correlated to be not safe. So the, the other side of the spectrum is not having them at all in our neighborhood because that's kind of contradicts the safetiness. We want to raise our kids here and any of these type of housing, kind of the perception is maybe damaged. So we have, we have heard all of them. Do, I cannot give you the stats, how much weight in any of those, but we have heard all of those comments.
That's what a challenge this we face. I, I don't want to go through a lot because I'm sure there'd be more conversation. But I just want to make last statement that we've done a great job with homeless housing, right? Transitional housing, the project we're working on. But that's after years of working together, listen to the public, considering what it is. I hope what we're talking today will represent, reflect the same process. I don't, otherwise we could be going through the same thing we had to do at the beginning of the homeless shelter. We're going to have lots of conflicts. So I, I hope you keep that in mind and then maybe you can give us your perspective. Where are we with, in this process? That'd be good. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you.
If I may, you had a question about the, the need and if there's any data behind that. I, I just wanted to note that the State Department of Commerce will be providing data on the city's assessed need for these types of housing, likely within the next year or so. And this will help inform the comprehensive plan periodic update.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stokes?
Well, first, I want to thank you very much, Chair Malkushin and staff and the planning commission that's been working on this. It's not just having the six, seven of us up here talking for an hour or so, maybe two or three times. But you spent weeks, hours on this going back, which is why we have the commissions. I mean, we can't go out and do this and, you know. So, and from what you've reported, what I've seen and what the staff is seeing, bringing forth, you have done a really great job and you've done what we asked you to do. And it was a lot of work and a lot of back and forth. And, you know, we've all been, people have been on boards or commissions or work with them or liaisons. We know what, what it takes. So I'm very pleased and very proud of the work that's been done. And, you know, we, we need to make sure this is the right thing. We need to go over it and that's, that's it. But, but I just, I get frustrated wanting to reinvent this thing and re-figure it. And, and I think, you know, we're in 2022. We have great changes in the city and we act as if we're still in 2012, trying to resolve how to keep the city the Bellevue way that, that kind of keeps out people that don't quite fit into what we want in our neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods are changing quite a bit. People are coming in there from other, and these aren't the same people who were here in 2012. You have new people coming in. The, the diversity has changed dramatically. It's a better city than it was then, in my opinion, because of all these changes that have happened and everything. And we still can't get our hands, our, our heads around the idea that there are people who need human beings out there, who could be somebody's father, somebody's kid, who need help. And that's what communities are for. Communities like to talk about, we like to help people. Well, this is a great opportunity to do that and do it in a very way that's very positive. And we keep re-going over these same discussions. How difficult can we make it? How can we make it so this won't work and people won't do this? And so the homeless, the people who are need, the people needing supportive housing, they can go someplace else because they probably, they must not be Bellevuites because we don't...
Councilmember Stokes, can I ask you, you have some tangible recommendations or questions that you'd like to have answered?
Well, I'm just saying that I would like, yeah. The, I, I don't, I guess, the questions is, I, I think that I don't quite understand why we have to revisit and change and really make it most difficult to put this in place. I guess that's the question.
Yeah, like what do you think about the recommendations of the planning commission?
I think the planning, I, I would go with, I think they're good. I think we're making some, some changes here. I think they've been very smart in having supportive housing and the other housing, the, where this, temporary. I think this is, this is an approach that we've been looking for, for a long time to get a handle on this and make it so that it is, is compatible in the community and that we, we serve people who are in Bellevue. If we want to do it the Bellevue way is to take care of and include everyone in Bellevue. And I think that's what you're doing. We can, we can tweak some of these things, but I, I think, I just really think you've done an excellent job. And if we, and we can always come back and look at this later. We also have, I think, a responsibility. We are part of the state. We're part of the county. We're, we're not just an island by itself. And the state has taken some very positive and necessary human focus, neighborhood focus, being good people focused on helping each other. And when they do that and ask us to happen, and that, if, if we were doing this, they wouldn't have to make these changes. So I think what you set out is frankly, we're just, we're just, you know, kind of trying to push back and, and try to keep Bellevue from dealing with this when the fact of matter is, there are people, I don't see what's, what is different between what we're talking about supportive housing, the way with people coming in and working, you know, maybe they're not related, but coming in and doing this to people who are related and who need supportive housing and have issues and have sometimes wander off and do things in the community. It's the same thing. So what I'm saying is, I think we need to focus on getting this in place and making it work because we already have the tools. We can tweak them, but we have the tools. We spend more time to arguing about what the tools are instead of coming to agreement and putting that in place and see how it goes. I don't, don't want to take time in terms of arguing about some of these things. I mean, I know, I know Mary's Place, actually, they did a great job and I think that's a good idea. Look at that. I do also know that they didn't, they knew where they were going when they went out before they did this. It was, it was a going out to the community afterwards and saying, okay, we're going to do this and this is how we're going to do it and we get you on board. So again, I think, I think we're at a good place. I think we can, you know, have people bring recommendations forward. But anything that, that tightens this up to the, to the extent that it keeps people out and keeps people who need help from getting help, I just can't support that.
Okay, thank you. So I think Councilmember Stokes is supportive of what the planning commission is recommending. We've heard lots of comments, a number of questions that we'd like to get answers to, I think, before we make any decisions. So I think we'll have to have another meeting on this. And I'd like to invite council to submit any other questions to staff and staff will answer them for all of us. So that submit any other questions to staff and staff will answer them for all of us so that we have that information in front of us when we reconvene.
Thank you.
And when might that, I know we have to have this done, well, we don't have to, we'd like to have it done by July, is it 22nd or something?
12th.
12th. We can extend the IOC that we have, but when might we see this again in front of the council?
I'm gonna defer to our, to Charmaine on this, but Charmaine?
Mayor, we should be able to fit that in sometime in June. I can't guarantee a date right now with things in flux, but we'll come back something...
But we have time to have further discussion on this. So with that, we will move on to our...
Mayor, may I ask one question of the staff before we walk? Is it clear to the staff what we need to bring back from this meeting?
I think we've got some really good notes. I know that Councilmember Robinson would like more information around the Redmond Agreement and how that could potentially be of use here, so we'll look at that. And I did take some further notes on which of the exemptions you had concerns about and so on. Councilmember Barksdale, I think you wanted to think a little bit more about balance and are there any barriers that are being put up through this process?
And the impact of those barriers?
Impact, okay. And then Councilmember Nguyenhaus, I know that you also had some interest in looking at the Redmond Code and understanding some of the distance separations and how this would potentially have greater intensity in single-family neighborhoods.
As a communication standpoint.
Yep, and you also had a communication plan and some questions about the 500-foot radius. Councilmembers Zahn, I know that you were looking for a little bit more information about the best practices and also looking back on what was discussed at that April 27th meeting and how that has informed where we're at today. Let's see, Mayor Robinson, you were interested in talking more about community engagement and I'd suggested maybe we could look at that as a BMP, but we can, you know, talk a little bit further on how we think that could possibly fold into this and how we can do that. So we will also bring back those best management practices that were also discussed previously with council, so we will bring back that as well and try and kind of figure out how these all roll together. I think you also, Mayor Robinson, had some questions about the value of the code of conduct versus the lease, so we will work with the service providers to get a little more information on that also. And you had also mentioned a potential exemption for six or less residents, so we'll look at how that could potentially come in here. Councilmember Lee, I think you had some questions around the exemption, so we will tighten that up a little bit so we can try and provide you with some clarity there as well. And I think you also had some questions about the needs, the data needs, so we will see if we have anything that we can bring back today about the need in the community. We know that Commerce is doing work in the following year, but we'll see what we can find with our, you know, our friends in community development. And Councilmember Stokes, I think you were really, your interest was in making sure that we don't provide additional barriers to citing these uses in the city. So that's what I have in a short list.
And anything you left off, we can follow up with an email.
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Ron.
We're gonna take a break. We'll reconvene at nine o'clock. Back in order, and we have our second study session item, Mr. Miyake.
Councilmembers, we do have our quarterly update on the culture and economic development and, you know, we, we receive these quarterly as you, as you know. The last time we had an economic development update was back in February 2022. We also had an arts update in May of, of this year and retail study update last week. So I imagine this report may be somewhat brief this evening, but as council has asked is, is always to provide you a quarterly update on the economic development within the city. With that, I'm gonna, joining us tonight is Mike Cotterman, our director, and Philly Marsh Economic Development Manager, both of our community development department. With that, I'm turning it over to you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyenhaus, members of the council. Very pleased to be here this evening to present you with this quarterly update as Mr. Miyake mentioned. Tonight's presentation is just to give you information, there's no direction that we're looking for this evening. We want to share with you some of the, how we're doing in terms of the business community emerging from the pandemic, where we are at this point in time, as well as talk about the value of the partnerships and really touch on the many partnerships that we have, both locally and within the region, and then talk about some lessons learned that will inform our ongoing business support. And we also want to highlight our new workforce development program that we've just gotten started. So with that, I'm happy to introduce Philly Marsh, who's gonna go through the presentation and will be happy to answer your questions at the end. Philly?
Thank you, Michael. So tonight, we are focused on a few programs, but the CED Division does manage the ongoing efforts of business attraction and marketing, business retention and expansion, as well as the arts program. We also advanced the six new focus areas in the ED Plan that contribute to the complete economic development environment. Tonight, we are happy to report that after two years of uncertainty, we are not only emerging from the pandemic, but we have a stronger and more collaborative network of regional partners with aligned and shared goals. The many lessons learned over the past two years will guide the iteration and process improvement of ongoing, ongoing and continuous programs. For example, on this slide, you see a screen grab of what is now publicly available on our economic development webpages. We realize how vital current and just-in-time data was for our partners and public and we now host the Data Dashboard that illustrates a number of economic data points related to employment, tourism, small business, workforce and international trade. At this time, we are seeing a strong recovery with unemployment to pre-pandemic levels, confidence in commercial real estate and tourism rebounding. Our hotels are starting to see 70% occupancy days and one hotel did report their first sold-out night since the start of the pandemic. The pandemic presented us an opportunity to expedite our ED Plan strategies and be a more active convenor on topics of importance and apply a partnership approach. To sustainably grow our economy, we must also grow our partnerships. It took a village to respond to the pandemic and we want to take a moment to recognize all the partners across the region that we worked with through thick and thin over the past two years. We came together, revolved up our sleeves and dived into uncharted territory of responding to a pandemic, often leaning on each other for support. Within the first few weeks of the pandemic, we put a call out to our East Side City Partners to join a meeting to discuss what they are hearing and how they are responding. By taking the lead to bring us together, we shared information, best practices and divvied up the work, so we were able to lighten, lighten the load of the pandemic and provide better and more culturally competent service to our businesses. There is still more work to do to ensure all businesses have access to opportunity, but we look forward to continuing to work with a growing list of regional partners to provide the East Side with a strong and equitable employment, entrepreneurship and business expansion ecosystem of support. So how are we taking the lessons learned from the pandemic and incorporating them into our ongoing best practices? Two key areas are communication and partnership. With the pandemic, we learned the value and need for effective communication strategies to be able to reach our entire business community with opportunities available. With any program, we need to identify who that target audience is and how best to reach them with the right message, which leads me to partnerships. For equitable and effective business assistance, we must collaborate with our village of partners to raise the next entrepreneur or see that small business reach its full potential. There is no one-size-fits-all recipe for supporting a business to its full potential. Depending on the business type, stage, need and demographics, we work to find the best resource for the unique business. We're taking a leading role collaborating, collaborating with partners across the state and region to create a framework to bring this network together to provide a comprehensive and equitable delivery of service through a trusted community partner network. This work helps to inform iterations of the Regional Startup 425 Program to best need the, to best meet the current needs of our businesses. And in 2023, the city of Bellevue will resume administration of this program that has currently been administered, administered by the city of Kirkland. Now, we're usually here to report on the quantitative data that we've met with 37 businesses and that 92% of our businesses think Bellevue's economy is better than others, but tonight I do want to take a few moments to share some stories behind those statistics. We've recently were reached out, were contacted via email about a immigrant who wanted to open a bakery. We met with them in downtown park and then connected them with one of our small business advisors. We're happy to report that they are now developed their business plan and with that are working on securing funding to open a storefront here in Bellevue. We also helped Theater 33, which is an arts organization in Bellevue. Back in 2020, they were needing to find another site due to their needs, their lease was expiring. Due to some unique requirements of high ceilings and sprinkler systems, it did take a while, but we're happy to report that they're currently building out their new theater and were just recognized by 425 Magazine as best performing, best live theater on the East Side. And we recently reached out to a women-owned tech startup with business retention requests. We wanted to learn a little bit more about their startup, their experience in Bellevue and what their growth trajectory was. We were able to learn about their company and connect them to visit Bellevue, the BDA for, for networking and business development opportunities. We were able to create a relationship, so as they do grow, they can reach back us, out to us for assistance in finding a space to meet their growing need. We are taking the lessons learned from our business assistance program and we're excited to apply them to our new workforce development program. Influenced by strategies in the economic development plan and cemented by impacts of the pandemic, the city of Bellevue is the first on the East Side to have a local workforce development program. With Bellevue taking the lead of launching this first program, we hope it will provide lessons in a model for expansion across the East Side. At the end of Q1, with federal recovery funds, the city of Bellevue hired an inaugural workforce development specialist. Purnaya Sathe joins the cultural and economic development team to assist with recovery and advance the strategies in the workforce chapter of the ED Plan. With initial, with limited initial capacity, the Bellevue's workforce program will provide workforce navigation services to residents, collaborate with community partners and work with employers throughout the city to expand internships, apprenticeships and other work-based opportunities with a focus on technology, career pathways. We're excited to report that last week, we launched Career Navigation Hours at Mini-City Hall, and this was informed by the data from 2021 that over 1,500 people came to Mini-City Hall with employment or business-related inquiries. We're striving to better learn what the distinct need is and work with our ecosystem of partners to be able to provide that support as well as track that need and ensure that employees have resources at their fingertips to continue to advance their career through their journey. Another upcoming program I want to draw attention to is the Bellevue College Center for Career Connections Welcome Back to Your Career Event. Through Bellevue Human Services Funding, the Bellevue College Center for Career Connections is open to any Bellevue resident and on June 7th, they are hosting a workshop for internationally-trained professionals to help navigate how to practice their profession in Washington State. Now ingrained in this new program is better collection of quantitative and qualitative local workforce data to better understand the need and opportunities while also measuring the success and to inform future programming. One of the challenges with workforce data is it tends to be largely regional with a bit of a, with a, with a lag, but by building better relationships with our existing employment and education ecosystem, we can share and aggregate data to highlight the gaps and opportunity. Our work is also strongly connected to the human services and the education and job skill goal of the human services needs assessment. The data insights we will learn from our work will be shared across departments to help inform other programming and efforts. Now, when we look at unemployment rate, the March rate is 2.1%, which represents about 1,700 Bellevue residents. But in addition to unemployment rate, we also want to examine the labor force nonparticipation rate, and those are those that are out of the workforce, workforce and no longer looking for a job, as well as the underemployment rate. The current data on this screen is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which provides aggregated total. And while not perfect to do a lag in data collection, by examining 2020 census data, a different data set, we can dive deeper into the full percentages to understand who is out of work and how we might reach them and create programs for them. The 2020 data set does break down the data by age, race, sex, education attainment and other statuses. So we're able to look at that large labor force nonparticipation rate and understand that by age and by sex and other things. Further analysis of this breakdown will help inform programming and targeted outreach. So why is a city focused on workforce development important? Well, we not want, we want to not only ensure our community is connected to the training opportunities and paths to prosperity, but this focus also supports our businesses, businesses' access to talent they need to prosper. Technology companies continue to be drawn to Bellevue and perform well. The city recently welcomed Snapchat, who joins other high-profile newcomers such as Chewy and Bida Dance, who continue hiring in Bellevue after entering the market. As a reflection of Bellevue's continued strength as an innovation hub, T-Mobile recently opened a 24,000-square-foot 5G innovation hub in the Spring District and Site Selection Magazine recently named Bellevue as one of the top 15 locations for new headquarter relocations. Criteria included attractive lifestyle amenities, excellent travel and hospitality and a positive business attraction trends. This is a helpful accolade for continuing to attract mid-sized businesses. And I did wanted to note that Sean Carr has recently joined GIX as his CEO and is planning to relaunch, planning a relaunch of messaging and marketing for its Masters of Science and Innovation Technology. The goal is to grow this program to 140 students per year and we learned that graduates of this program mostly stay in Bellevue, providing talent for our large technology companies. Now, as we emerge from the pandemic, we are fortunate to see the continuation of our growth, but we want, can't lose sight on our holistic economic development strategies to ensure the right recipe for a healthy economy. For a healthy and sustainable Bellevue, we must be a balanced Bellevue. We're still understanding stabilized return to office and work-from-home trends. What we do know is that through the pandemic, restaurant establishments within neighborhood districts close to housing and people fared better than those in business hubs. And in a post-pandemic environment, a work, live, play 18-hour environment is vital. Many of you participated in the Arlington, Virginia Study Tour led by the BDA. Michael will share some lessons learned there.
Can we go? Thank you. So I was fortunate in my third, fourth and fifth days here on the job to go to Arlington with Mayor Robinson, Councilmembers Zahn and Barksdale and several members of the staff as well as representatives from the, the business community. It was a very informative tour and we will come back to you at a future date with more of a summary of that and give you a lot more in terms of lessons learned. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight for you this evening. One is, we looked at three different areas of National Landing and looked at the land use, the mixes that were there and, and talked to them about how they're really trying to create that 18-hour day that, that Philly just talked about. So they've got some different challenges than we do in some respects, but it is, I think, what we've talked about in terms of what we're doing in the downtown as well as in Bell Red and what we're talking about for the Wilberton area. So that was one of the very important takeaways I thought we had from that particular trip. Also, just the leadership role that the National Landing, the, the Business Improvement District that they've created there and the importance of that partnership between the county, because now they have the county government rather than city government, county and the, and the BID in terms of working together to create those, those public spaces, those active areas to really help to program those, create the amenities that are important to go with the land use mix that it's created through the, through the land use planning and through the code. So those are a couple of the major ones that, that we noted on the trip. It was a very full three days, fairly intense, so there's a lot, lot to summarize for you and we'll come back with that. Back to Philly.
So this presentation was just a taste of some of the projects we're working on. Some other efforts that we want to make sure that you're aware of is the BDA is launching their strategic plan. A survey is now live and will inform that strategic direction, so we encourage everyone to take that survey. Our outdoor dining program launched today, the water barriers were being put out on the street. And then you heard about our retail study last week, that RFP will be announced soon. There's some great work happening in the arts district. We actually are happy to report that it's just announced that Bellevue did, was awarded... We actually are happy to report that it's just announced that Bellevue was awarded a $50,000 grant from the NEA to help support the East Side Arts Partnership Program. So big kudos to our arts team and our grants program team there. And then we look forward to bringing you the Tourism Promotion ILA and, of course, seeing you at the Rock and Roll Marathon in September. Thank you, and with that, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, great, wonderful presentation. This is information only. Any comments or questions from anybody? Councilmember Barksdale, and then we'll just kind of go down the table here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you're doing on this economic development front, just because as you were going through it, I could just see sort of in the business community, we'll talk about the flywheel, how things are self-sustaining, right? When you bring together the elements that you were just talking about of jobs, amenities such as nightlife, and small businesses, mom-and-pop shops and such, I mean, it creates this self-sustaining ecosystem, if you will. So really appreciate the presentation and the work that you're doing, and I think we're headed in a really good direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to say was rock and roll forever. No, this is really great. I mean, it was good to see this all put together. I don't think we've had this kind of a comprehensive presentation in a while, and I'm very excited about work with the arts district and the tying in, continually tying in of arts and economic development and the creative economy and all that. So that's just fantastic. Good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation as well. I'm getting myself trained up so I can walk the half-marathon rock and roll. I don't think I can run yet with my healing foot. But anyway, excited about that. Great to see the ecosystem of partners that are helping support small business. And I also wanted to lift up that we do have some other partners too with working with the federal SBA and Seattle Chinese Radio. We're going to have an event here to help people understand how to promote that, and I believe Councilmember Lee and the mayor are part of that. So anyway, super excited about that part. In reading the packet, some things that you didn't talk about in the presentation, but I like, is the small business walks that you talked about. I thought that was really good. The Mini-City Hall, the capacity building, the resource navigation, especially the piece that also about the nonparticipation 35,000. So what an opportunity to look at potentially how they might either enter the workforce or maybe start their own small business, upskilling for some of the ones that are working. I am curious about access to capital then to support somebody who might want to start a small business and what might be some opportunities there to help with that. Love the international event at Bellevue College. I wondered about other partnerships for workforce development with the school district, with their CTE program. It seems like, you know, I saw apprenticeships in there, being able to partner with the school district to do some apprenticeship fairs, talk about the different trades that are possible. Related to that, I am wondering about, you know, we are looking at apprenticeship within the city's contracts as well, whether, as we think about all of the opportunities for construction, are we measuring and setting some goals and understanding who's actually where the opportunities are and placements and income levels as we look at that as well? And then lastly, I wasn't sure if, as we look at this for workforce, do we talk about supportive workforce and those that might be another untapped category of individuals in our city where I believe that we have had some folks in that program, I might not be calling it the correct type of jobs, but it seems to me that that's another opportunity to look at how the city itself might be able to provide jobs and employment for more individuals in our community. So it's the broader view of the whole spectrum and not necessarily only the focus on high-tech, even though I love the rest and the arts and everything. So a couple of questions embedded in there.
Great, I'll work from the bottom up. So supportive workforce, we do work with some human services-funded organizations that specialize in supportive workforce, and we can definitely work with HR here to learn more about any programs that are in existence in the city and kind of help support indirect to that. We did get connected with Patrick, with Youth Link, who was here last week, and are working in partnership to have relationships with the school district and be able to bring career exploration flares, et cetera, to them. So found a great partner in him. We also do participate in East Side Pathways and the Career Action Network, and that includes Bellevue School District and a few other kind of high school partners. So some good relationship building and information sharing there. Access to capital is a need that is definitely out there, and we are exploring opportunities regionally to be able to provide more capital to our small businesses and our startup community there. So we've explored some options, and we're happy to bring back some of those programs and potential opportunities around access to capital.
I think that would be great because what we hear from our BIPOC community is that they often don't have the relationships and don't even understand how to get started. So if they don't have access to capital, then it's a really huge barrier to being able to start a small business.
Correct. One thing I can share is we are working with East Side for All Enterprise Welcoming Group and our Bellevue Chamber to actually inventory our banks and which banks have in-language support for individuals so they could come in and have that culturally competent delivery of service. So not the end-all result, but just one sliver we're trying to carve out to move towards better access.
Thank you.
I am such a fan of the workforce training program. I so appreciate what you're doing with that, and I think that's a wonderful opportunity for people who have left the workforce for multiple reasons and want to get back in. It's been really hard to do that for years, and this will be a great way to upskill and get back in. You know, City of Bellevue did remarkably well through COVID and coming out of COVID, and it didn't just happen by accident. It is the work of our economic development team. So I want to thank you so much for all the work that you did. You never slept. You never stopped pushing, and you continued to attract companies, you continued to retain companies, and to create opportunities for all the people in Bellevue to, if they wanted to have a business here, to make it possible for them and to provide support and training and information. You did a very good job, and I think, you know, when I look at the stats here, it's quite remarkable. Thank you.
It took a village.
Yeah, it did take.
Well, kudos to what the mayor just said, but thanks for the great presentation. Like always, a lot of good things happening, and it's just amazing to me how it feels like momentum is really starting to ratchet up here. The 2.1% unemployment rate, fantastic. As we took part of the presentation to a delegation from South Korea last week, as you rightly said, it was dusting off the old PowerPoints. I haven't been able to do that the last couple of years, but wow, wasn't that great that another city wants to learn about how we're doing it in Bellevue and vice versa, what they're doing that we can learn from as well. So it really feels like we're starting to turn a corner here, which is so great. Part of your presentation, I noticed, because it was included in the South Korean delegation presentation about 5G. I personally would really like to see an update on that next time around, not just 5G overall, but the 5G Innovation Lab, the startups that have been created through that, how they're proceeding and growing and hopefully thriving in Bellevue. Would love to get an update about GIX as well at some point, once Sean has had a chance to kind of get settled in. That's a big part of Bellevue, part of, you know, that innovation degree and just attracting, you know, world-class talent and companies to Bellevue. That's a piece of it. So I would love to get an update on that at some point, too. Love the outdoor dining program, so glad that's back, and got a lot of kudos today on social media as well, which is great. But most of it, it seems like it's all focused downtown right now, Main Street, but what about the rest of the city? Would certainly like to get some feedback on that because I know there's a lot of other neighborhoods that would love to get some support for that as well, be it Lake Hills, Newport Hills, you name it. They all have some dining areas, and if we can do more to help them take advantage of the outdoor dining program, I think that's great. Oh, and then just one question on Slide 10. You said that, if I remember correctly, just let me go to the slide here, that the Bellevue labor force nonparticipation rate, but you said embedded in that was also the underemployed? Is that correct? Did I hear that correct?
A separate data point is the underemployment rate. So those are individuals who are working in jobs that, and they could be upskilled to have.
Yeah, no, I know what it is. I'm just curious what that rate is then.
So with that one, we have a regional rate, and it, I'll have to get back to you on that exact rate.
That's fine, no problem. I'm just curious what that might look like and what programs the city might be able to develop to help people get underemployed and get fully employed, or give them those additional skills so that they can get to that next rung in their career, or whatever that might look like. I think that's not only a Bellevue problem, but a regional, state, country problem. So anything we can do there to help them get those skills to make it to that next level would be great. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Well, Michael, you've been here just briefly. So by hearing what you have heard from Filippa, you know, Philly, you must be proud of what the Economic Development Group has been doing. So, you know, what they have been doing great during this COVID, you know, and doing well with the resilience, helping a lot of unexpected, unanticipated problems, and now we're going through the recovery. So, you know, as you see what you presented, it's very impressive. Especially when the point out, I like, you know, your heading that you're regional thought leaders. I think that's very good because economic development has no borders. We need to work together. And you showed that on your Start 425, but I just want to point out, however, you know, you have other partners that you need to connect. Maybe you are, but, you know, we feel that perhaps there could be more. You mentioned workforce development, you mentioned GIX, and so there are a few others I just want to suggest. You know, one of the big partner in the region is, you know, Greater Seattle Partnership. Bellevue has a big presence there, the mayor and myself, and we have an investment in them as well. So they're talking the same thing as we're talking about, workforce development. We're talking about, you know, headquarter relocation to our area. We're talking about a lot of the same stuff. And there are other organizations, partners, you know, PSRC Economic Development District Board, you know, that's also a partner that are working very closely in the region. So we need to connect with them so that we have data we can share, they can provide leverage to help us, we don't need to duplicate, you know? So I think it's very important. And since we have representation with the council members, make sure that we are connected, you know, we are being utilized. And there are others like Bellevue College, that's another one. We've done all this in the past, but, you know, it just has come and it's gone for many different reasons. But now with the pandemic over, it provides us real opportunity, and the pictures change. The Economic Technology Center is now in Bellevue. So I think we, people recognize us, GSP, EDD, and others, you know, the partners I mentioned, I'm sure they do. So I think we're in a position to leverage with them and work with them. And Uda Botho, that's another one, Lake Washington Botac, you know, we talked about before, how do we get the middle class, you know, the skilled labors, you know, talk about advanced manufacturing, you know? We have lots of opportunities. The mayor and I, we worked quite a bit, you know, with coding at one time, you know? So all these are opportunities, and don't forget Bellevue School District. Last week, the mayor recognized the rocket people, rocketry from Bellevue High School. I mean, these are future entrepreneurs, you know, startups we're looking for. And Debbie DeMille went to a luncheon, and Bungie talked to us, and computer gaming, that's amazing. You know, we've got lots of talents here. We're in Japan, not that far from us. And so I think we've got opportunity. GIX, you mentioned, they just hired a new director. I met him, we talked. He's from Virginia, and he knows what he's doing, and he has, no, he knows the challenges. He talked to University of Washington, you know, has his own particular challenges, and the city hasn't really worked with them very closely. We haven't, and we need to. It's an opportunity for us to explore. And with this new director, new direction, and maybe we can make something happen. And we're lucky that, you know, T-Mobile has been working peripherally, and they see the space, they know we are important, so we're developing 5G. So all this is a basis of our economic development. So as you can see, I mean, the picture looks good, the opportunity. Debbie always mentioned about Korea. A couple of months ago, you know, through GSP, I met with Hong Kong Trade Development people here, they came. And then in the past, you know, we have worked with Taiwan, you know, they are also a big part. We're talking about computer chips. Who makes the computer chips?
Help someone really. Could you wrap it up?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
One more, then done. It's just got a long list. I just happen to have a lot to share with them, okay? Japan is another one. Don't forget, all these are real, great, possible, potential partnerships that we can work with. So keep up the good work, open up your horizon, we're here to help you. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
I have nothing to add. My colleagues have covered it all and then some. I think it's time to gavel out. Thank you for the presentation, really exciting stuff.
If I could just, I'd like to respond briefly to Councilmember Lee, if I could.
Oh, sure.
I'll be very brief, I promise. I want to thank all of the council for recognizing the good work of the staff. I have to say this, after having been on the job a month now, I've been very impressed with all of the staff, the Economic Development Group, the Planning Group, and the Neighborhood Services Group. And you've heard from most of them over the course of the last month that I've been here, so we have the opportunity to come to the council on a regular basis and share with you the work that's being done. So thank you for your support, thank you for recognizing the good work that's being done, and tonight in particular by the Economic Development Group. It is an amazing group of people that I'm blessed to work with in the department. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Okay, so before we adjourn, there is no meeting next week because there's a holiday, and our next council meeting will be on June 6th. So we will see you then.